Good evening. Hereby open Board of Selectmen meeting, August 27th at 6:00 PM in the Rutland Public Library. This meeting is being videoed for public viewing, both on cable and I believe on YouTube now. You can find it if you look up the Rutland Cable channel. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I get a motion assigned Treasury warrant five and payroll?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye unanimous?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have some meeting minutes for Monday, the 30th. Of July. Can anybody have any questions about them?
Abby, what was the date of the one? I just had one correction. Is that the 13th?
I think it was the last evening.
The last one.
Okay. Yeah, the 13th, okay.
So 30th, I would make the motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second. And no corrections, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. And August 13th. Jeff, you had one correction?
I had just one correction on the footage of Charnakil Road. I believe it reflected 320, and I think it should be 3,200. With that exception, I make the motion to accept the minutes for the 13th.
I'll second with the correction.
Thank you. Were there any questions on the correction? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye. Three yes, one abstain. Unanimous. Thank you. And we are going to jump right in with our 6 o'clock appointment. Mike Moriarty, Rutland Regional Dispatch. Come on up.
Hi, Mike. I just heard you again talk about some things for dispatch. I've done a little more work from the last time we met, and I'll just walk you through it real quick. Bear with me. There we go. So, the building that we've been looking at is the town annex. I've had a company come in, review the building already for space needs. With doing that, it would increase our console amounts from three positions right now, which we currently have, to 11 positions total. That's counting the one that would be at my desk and the supervisor's desk as well. The dispatch center needs more space to further reduce the town's assessments, and I will not go out and start looking and speaking with other communities until I have the space to accommodate them. Right now, bringing in Warren in January is going to bring the center to capacity. I won't be able to bring anymore in past that. I do have three fire departments that are interested in coming in, part of one community, and I know there's another community out there that I could speak to that has interest in regionalization, maybe not with our center at this point, but possibly in the future.
Can you name them?
What's that?
Name the departments that are interested in coming up?
For right now, I haven't talked to them yet. They expressed interest. It's out in Palmer, one of the fire departments out there. Just basic, they're interested in seeing what we can provide them. That's as far as I've gotten so far with them. Haven't had a formal meeting with them, and I don't want to have that yet until I can accommodate them.
If that way.
Okay. Thanks. Currently, right now, this is our current floor plan. We have three positions, and then the supervisor's office off to the side there. And bringing on Warren is going to max that out. That third position is a reduced in size from position one and two. It's very cramped and not a lot of working space in that area. Less monitors as well for that position, so space is needed. Total square footage right now that we occupy in the public safety building is 549 square footage. My office being 112, the supervisor's office only 80, and then the dispatch floor itself This is the proposed plan for the town annex. That top right corner there is actually the entryway to the town annex. Brings you right into the floor. Proposed offices, the first one being mine on the right, and then further down where Margaret's is at this point would be the supervisor's slash training room. Just some more pictures. Square footage is about 1,400 square feet in that building. Adds about 200 to 300 more feet to the communication floor. More room for myself and the supervisor's office. This does not include the building department area. We did not include that in on this plan right now. It is proposed down the line, but this is just the main dispatch floor, the supervisor's office, and my office as well.
Can you expand on that a little bit, Mike? I mean, so are you leaving the building department?
We wouldn't leave them there, no. I didn't get any plans or layouts of what... My idea was to make that into a training, hosting, training and slash kitchen area for the dispatches. I didn't have the company go into that part of it. I just did the main floor at this point, but we would occupy that as well. The very far back where the vault is would still be open to the town hall for the vault, obviously, and the other records that are in that back closet out there would be secured by key card access as well. So we would occupy the rest of the building.
You don't have a floor plan?
Floor plan of that, no. This is all that company could produce for me in the time that they had.
With the grant funding from the state, would that encompass what you don't have written down here, the kitchen and the training room?
Yes. Yep. Timeline. So the FY 2020 development grants are released around March of 2019 and are awarded around October-ish. They don't have set dates on the awards. It changes from year to year, but that's usually around the timeframe. From there, we would jump in in November to do demo interior and exterior modifications to the building, followed by network and electrical. That would have to be all run under the raised floor that we'd put in for the dispatch floor. Consoles, the ones that you saw on there, take about four to six... 14 to 16 weeks to come in after purchase. So we wouldn't be able to purchase them until October, which brings us to February, roughly, and that takes about a couple of weeks for those to be installed. So overall, looking at being into the space around March of 2020.
I have a question.
Go.
There are FY 20 development grants. Those can be carried forward if there was any delay in the demo and construction, correct?
Yes, so you can do grant extensions from year to year. Right now, we have an FY 15 development grant that is still open, and it's been continuing on and on, and is going to continue to carry on until we can get moving on that one as Just the furniture alone is roughly $314,000. I don't have any of the other numbers on the other part. That's all I could get from this company in the timeframe that I had, but none of these costs would be coming back to the town of Rutland. This will all be applied under the development grant and paid by the State 911 Department. And that's where the funding sources... The funding source would be from is mainly from the State 911 Department. And had another idea that I have not yet spoke with Chief Neipe about by possibly making that training slash kitchen area the EOC for the town, and possibly maybe receiving money from MIMA as well to assist with the funding. Any questions so far on that?
So many questions.
So many?
The biggest question is where does everybody go that gets kicked out?
Well, that's not the biggest question, but hold on. Let's... Hold on. Let's... Yeah, we're getting to that in a second. Let's focus on the presentation first. So Mike?
So Mike was directed or requested to focus on his department. He can't very well speak for all the other departments, so he's here bringing his presentation for his department.
Exactly. So currently, right now, the total operating budget for the center is roughly $919,000. Total state funding currently right now is $299,892, and the total that is being assessed out to the four communities right now is $619,000. And Rutland's assessment for this year is $274,179. That's the budget for this year. Bringing on Warren on January 1st, the second half assessment that would go out January would be $137,000 for the town of Rutland. Without extra support, which I don't see this happening with the state, would be $123,000 for the town of Rutland with bringing on Warren for their second half assessment, saving Rutland $13,000, roughly $13,000. With the extra support, the second half assessment would be $111,000, which the savings for the town of Rutland would be $25,000. The extra support is for the 10th full-timer that would be coming in. I have requested that the only way we will be able to take on Warren is with that extra support, and that's one of the contingencies right now, so I'm pretty sure that contingency is going to be met by the State 911 Department. How much support they're going to give me, I'm not sure. So roughly, that number is just taking the salary from the 10th full-timer, splitting it in half, and coming up with those assessment numbers. Also, with the development grant this year, the director's salary can be applied for under the development grant one time for a 12-month period and can span over two grant periods. In this case, we would only be able to attain six months of my salary on this year's grant and then six months on the next development cycle. My recommendation, if they do award my salary under that, is to take half of that and put it towards our capital. We do have over $1.5 million worth of radio equipment throughout the four communities right now, soon to be more. Stuff's going to come end of life very soon. Stuff's going to have to be replaced. It's very expensive equipment, so starting a capital account to start replacing some of that stuff would be my recommendation, taking half of my salary, putting it towards that, and taking the other half and reassessing it back out to the communities. If all communities agree, overall, Rutland could save approximately $38,000 come January 1st for the whole FY 19 budget season.
That's even with your recommended savings of half of the salary to be put towards capital?
Yep. Yep.
So the towns are also paying indirects, which include debt service on the public safety complex. So if you physically relocated to a building that doesn't have debt service, is there a way that we could arrange with the other towns to continue to provide that funding for the use of space?
Right. I'm sure that's feasible. I don't see an issue with that, but that is for the communities to talk to. The SNI funding, I can't say how much. They won't project how much they're going to give us when Warren comes on. They can't. I tried to find that out today as well, and they're not willing to project costs at this point, and we have to wait until Warren comes in, and then they'll give us our extra support. And it's a 30-day turnaround at that point, so I can't really predict how much money they're extra they're going to give us for taking on Warren at this point. And this, we already talked about. So right now, that's where I'm at, and I know you have plenty of questions.
So if we talk about real square footage, because some of this is a little bit not real yet, when you talk about the current center, the real square footage for the dispatch alone is 549, but you didn't include common area usage in that. Is that fair? You didn't include the bathrooms that they're currently using or the common area space where they might eat? I know there's a room in the current center.
In the current center right now?
Current center.
The current center. Where they eat right now is at their console.
They don't leave?
No. They stay right there.
Break rooms?
No break room.
But they are current... Do they ever go in the back and use the... And leave the area and use the break room that's in the back?
No.
They don't?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. There's a small little bathroom that's towards the front dispatch window on that plan. Very, very tiny, just one bathroom, unisex, and that's really all... That's all the space that you see there is minus my office, closet, whatever you want to call.
Personal space for them? They keep their coats with them, everything?
There's lockers that are right in that area as well, behind two and three in the corner.
Yep.
They're right in that corner there.
I see it as a locker kitchen.
Yep.
Now on to this, the annex building. So you gave a total square footage of 1423. That's already... I did a little math. It's about 2.6 times the amount of space you have, but you didn't include some of the space in the building, although you would like to expand to it. And you envision when the work is going on that that space will be vacated. Is that fair?
Say that again? You lost me there.
You didn't include on the... I don't know which...
You're looking for the whole building.
I want to know sort of what the whole square footage is that you would be using. I recognize that they left out the far side because that's where the big, you know, safe is and the mechanicals.
Yep.
You left out the left side, and yet you anticipate growing into it?
Not growing into it. Utilizing it too. I just... The company didn't have time to produce me the square footage, the plans for what I had envisioned for that area.
So the total square footage doesn't include the whole building, and we don't really know right now?
No, that's just the middle part of it right now.
So the total square footage is probably closer to 2,000?
Yeah, I would say so.
Do you know the building dimensions?
I do not. I did not take those, no.
Good question. How many... I mean, how big can the region grow based on the plans that you showed tonight, based on the 11 workstations and...
Depending on the communities, the population, call volumes. It all depends. Take on a small community like Paxton, their call volume's really not that high, may not require additional personnel, which would be the best option, is taking on communities like that.
Is it fair to say you could triple your size, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Triple the number of towns? Is that what you...
Triple the current population, so it's...
Yes.
Triple the population.
Population, yeah.
Thank you, sir. I know this is your first pass at this, so there's obviously a lot of blanks to fill in. One of the big blanks we would have, I'm sure, liked to have seen was construction costs. There was just nothing yet at all? Okay.
Well, there's not a whole lot of construction that needs to be done, just that one wall that needs to be taken down. Windows that need to be replaced to meet standards for the state. That's really it. The guy... The gentleman that came in, the grid is still fine, the ceiling grid. New lighting would have to be put in. There's really not that much major construction that would have to be done. The flooring that gets put down is a raised floor, about inch and a half high. No walls being put up. It's really not much major construction that needs to be done.
And all of those costs are... Would be paid for by the State 911?
Would be applied under the development grant for the state to fund, yes.
There would be no public access to the new facility? I mean, right now, the public has access to it, to go to the window.
Right.
I don't see anything.
We haven't ventured into that at this point. Don't know if we would follow like we would with the rest of the communities we served, call box or video intercom system within the Rutland Police Department with another live video camera on our side. Not sure. Down the line, look into that. But we do have the vestibule there that could possibly be used. There's options. That hasn't been spoken with the chief at all as well.
It's something you don't necessarily need anyway.
What's that? Public access? No, don't, because we do it for three other communities right now with no public access. They come up to a video camera with a call box outside, press the button, they talk to us direct, so.
All right, well, now the second half.
Second half.
What do we do with poor Mr. Williams?
I'm going to put a pin in his... Sorry. Hold on. Mike, if you... If it's all right, can you not go anywhere? And I think we're going to circle back, and we're going to let everybody ponder for a moment on this, but we did have a 615 that I think will go fast.
That's fine.
Bring you back. Is that okay?
Oh, no problem.
Maybe it won't, but I don't know. Father, you tell me. I don't know. Come on out.
You also have a CIPC appointment this year.
Good evening, everyone. Again, for those who may not know me, I'm Father Jim Boland. I'm the administrator over there at St. Patrick's, and I just come before you tonight. I believe we sent in most of our paperwork already. Just asking for a one-day liquor license for our annual parish festival that'll be held on September 29th with a rain date of the 30th. There's only a little question in terms of, we sent in a $60 check and we just... Because last year, I think if we had the rain date, like I think it was sent back or something of that nature, if I'm not mistaken there, Joe, on that one, but it's just a matter... Yeah, please.
I think we actually paid for two days last year, knowing that we had the rain date, so that was the question, whether, you know, we're only going to be using it one day, so how that works? Do we have to pay for two days, or does the one day cover us? The one-day pouring permit cover us? Because it's the 29th with a rain date of the 30th.
I'm going to ask to waive the fee anyways.
I thought we waived it last year.
Well, you waived our last one, and we had an event earlier this year that was waived, and that was greatly appreciated.
This is a different event. More liquor license.
I think we'll solve the problem for you, Father.
Oh, I appreciate it very much. No? Thank you very much. Any questions, I guess?
So the question, one day versus two, Abby? So what had... Have we had a situation ever that we remember where the rain date had to come into play?
I don't...
Where this question...
I believe it was before... The year before I got here, I came in last year, and the year before, it had gotten rained out because I think originally it was across the street at Memorial Field, and there was no way for there to be a rain date because of that. When I came in, I think the plans were very, very scattered of even if there was going to be a festival, we did create one and just put it in our back parking lot, which gave us the flexibility to have the rain date, which is why last time we got the two days, just because if we had a rain date, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't have any paperwork issues, obviously.
So the license already contains the date and the rain date, so...
Yeah. Bottom line, you're not doing a two-day event, so to me, that seems pretty straightforward.
No, no. Just a single-day event.
Okay.
Just wanted to double-check.
Make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license with the rain date.
Second.
Well, part of that, I also ask that we waive the fee.
One second.
Let's approve the license. So that motion is on the table with a second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, so make your waive fee motion.
Motion to waive the fee in the interest of the town. And second it.
And second it. Okay, so just for... And Skip, you might be the best person to ask about this. I'm just trying to think, or even Joe, just for the sake of continuity. We waive fees quite a bit for nonprofits. We obviously have that worked into our building use agreement where a nonprofit can apply to have their building fees waived. This is not relative to a public building, but it is a local nonprofit. So I just want to put that out there. Is everybody...
Motion remains unchanged.
Okay. We good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Congratulations. Take your check back.
Thank you very much. If you can make it down the 29th or the 30th, if it happens rerating on the 29th, we invite you down.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
And I have one more, brief one, that is jumping out of order down to a...
Joe, Joe. CIPC. Okay, thank you.
Coming back.
Okay.
Down to a... Where is it? An appointment to the CIPC, which is actually under New Business, but I believe the person is here, and Joe's coming back. You're here. Welcome. Come on up. And the board has a recommendation letter. Welcome, Mr. Mitch Riscidi.
Riscidi, that's right. Riscidi. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Could you introduce yourself?
Thanks for having me. My name is Mitch Riscidi. My wife and I live over on Britnall, and I was interested in serving and volunteering, serving my community. I have a long history of working around in government, so I obtained my master's degree in public administration from the University of Kentucky, worked for the city of Worcester for quite a bit. From there, took a position, was appointed to Governor Beshear's Cabinet for Economic Development. If that name doesn't sound familiar, it's because it was in Kentucky. I served under his administration, and I came back here, got married, and now I'm in Rutland, and I'm looking to serve my community. So, met with the group, their last meeting, great individuals, very qualified, very impressive. It's something that I want to be a part of, and I'm happy to be here.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Does anybody have any questions for Mitch?
His resume is right before. It's very impressive.
Joe's here, and he can speak to you.
We have a CIPC member. Can you introduce yourself, please?
Joe Becker, Vice Chair of the CIPC. As Mitch stated, he came to our last meeting, and we had a good conversation with him. He explained some of his background, some of his history and experience, and there was a unanimous vote by the CIPC to recommend Mitch be appointed to the committee.
And you won't mind if we ask him to be on maybe a few other committees, too? I see grants here on the resume. You know, all's fair.
I do serve other communities in the grant writing field, so if there's a need there, I'm more than willing to talk to any of you about what the community needs are, and we'll try to find some funding.
Yeah, you shouldn't have said that, but thank you very much. Welcome. Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Mitch Riscidi to the CIPC.
Ask for the recommendation of the CIPC. Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Welcome.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Let's have Mike come back, although it's less to do with you, but we're still going to sort of have you come back up. I know you are. All right, so the question came up. We've asked, does anybody have any follow-up questions, what we need to ask about Mike's presentation? I will say, Mike, I'll just make one last comment in regards to, it was a big omission, you know, to not see a dispatch counter in the new building is interesting, and I do get it that the communities who partner with us are utilizing a different format these days. There is no one live in the building 24/7 at all. They're working off of phones and cameras and video conferencing, and they're making that work. And then, part of me thinks, being a host community comes with additional responsibilities so that even a host community... Excuse me. Even a member community could ostensibly drive to its local dispatch center to get live help from a place that is staffed 24/7. So I'm really...
I'm on both sides.
Because why not move out of state?
When you get... Because when you do get busier, you're not going to have that person that's going to be able to get up and go to the counter. The calls are going to come in a lot more regularly than they do. The more communities you get on, the more calls, the more business calls, the more dispatching that has to be done. Neshoba, they do not have that. They have a call box outside their center.
Neshoba, they do not have that. They have a call box outside their center. Um, they have seven communities. Worcester, they do not have a dispatch window. Um, they have a police station that they go to, um, but there is no dispatch window. When we grow, if we grow, um, it's gonna get busier. It's gonna be less time that they're gonna be able to dedicate to a window unless I hire someone to work a window. So I'm looking towards the future. Um, not currently, right now, what we have. We may be able to work around it for maybe a year or two until more communities come in, but, um, I'm looking towards the future and trying to plan for the future.
And you haven't had this conversation yet with Nick, who's sitting quietly in the back, or at least not extensively?
Not extensively, no. Yes, I read.
Do you wanna comment at this time?
I, I've seen what, um, what Barry and Hubbard said are dealing with with the call boxes.
Yep.
It seems to work out okay.
Okay.
We're staffed anyways with an admin person during business hours.
Business hours.
So outside of business hours, that'll be a little bit of a change for us that we would have to adapt to.
Yeah.
And I, I'm confident we could do it.
If you had to.
If we had to. And it looks like there's a pretty decent timeline going along with this as well, so we have plenty of time to prepare for it.
What do you do when the, uh, admin person's on vacation or sick?
Well, I'm in, I'm in there a lot of the time as well, so.
Someone would cover it.
Uh, we answer the door. Or we could get another part-time person to help out. We're not at the staffing level where I could put an officer in there twenty-four-seven. That's just not feasible, but.
But there's always the option to go to the call box at.
Yeah, there'd be a button inside the station as well that they could press. If nobody's there, press the button, rings us, we say, all right. And then we just dispatch the on-duty officer that's out on the road back to the station.
How's Holden?
Ultimately, that's what we're doing anyways. We're greeting the person, asking what, what their issue is, and then dispatching the officer back to the station to come deal with the call.
How's Holden dealing with it right now?
I'm sorry?
Holden?
Holden? I'm unsure. I think they still answer the window at this point.
Do they?
Yeah.
I guess I'm sitting here wondering if this interim location, which to me, long-term, most likely the annex is, and if interim might mean twenty years, but if this is your interim location as regionalization becomes a thing throughout Massachusetts, which it clearly is.
Yep.
Um, and Rutland as a location, less than a town, ends up being the spot to host regionalized dispatch. I could see not having a window. Right now, I'm
Yep.
Really torn.
Yeah, I like the idea of a vestibule and some sort of face encounter.
Is it possible to work that in still?
It's, it's still a possibility. Nothing's final, so.
Nothing's final, right.
Then nothing's in stone yet, so.
We have to give you the building.
Exactly.
Okay, which, which brings us to part two.
I got a question on this.
Oh, you do?
In this current plan, um, how would the building department be accessed by the public?
No, I think they're out.
Yeah.
I think he just didn't, I think he just didn't finish.
We didn't finish.
Oh, I thought you were gonna leave them there for now.
No, 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 no. We just, the company, the company that produced the plans didn't have enough time to finish the building.
Talk about that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so you might be off the hook. You can probably sit down. Um, Mike's problem was where to put all of dispatch and whether or not Rutland rec needs, you know, what amount of space they need, where it needs to be, where it can go. We know for a fact, and you know I've asked this question many times, that right now the state is not paying for new construction. So that's kinda where we are right now. So that begs the question for this board, um, what do we think about this move? Just, just right from the get-go, what do we think about the move? Hold on one second.
Well, I mean, we, we need to have some sort of a realistic strategy of what to do with the displaced or anything. You have many, many entities in there. It's not
Well.
Appreciate the proposal, but I like proposals with a solution.
We only need that if we're agreeing that he's moving, right? If we're sitting there saying, there's no way we can handle this right now and unfortunately, we're gonna be at the end of our t- uh, term when it comes to growth and this is where Rutland's dispatch is gonna end up with Warren and we're done, then we don't have to have that conversation. If, if this is starting out as a, we're gonna have to do this and we have to move from there, then we have to have a different conversation.
Well, and I think that part, to me, part of that conversation then also is how committed to be in a host community is Rutland for the, the longer term, because if I understand a little bit about the way the state's moving, they're looking to have bigger regionalization areas. And so if we say Rutland is gonna stay in the annex and that's, or not in the annex where they are now in the public safety and that's it, then they're gonna be maxed out and probably not, Rutland at some point will no longer be a host community. Would be my
I think that's fair.
And so I think that's my
I think it's fair to say.
Yep.
Is how committed to be in a host community is Rutland.
Skip.
So the whole problem with moving them out, why don't we just put in a couple of trailers in the, in the parking lot till we decide what we're gonna do?
But you, but you were answering, I heard you make a comment about how committed are we to allowing the Rutland Center to grow?
A hundred percent. I am. I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, Wayne, what do you?
Well, I love the proposal. Um, and what it does, it pushes us in a direction we should have been going in a long time ago.
A long time ago.
I agree.
Leah, to your question, we are the oldest regionalized, um, rec in the state.
Right.
We are the community that's the center of Massachusetts and I, I wanna see us be the host. I wanna see us be, hate to put it as the winner, but kind of. Um, and we're watching these, these, uh, departments getting bigger and bigger. And you brought up Neshoba and it's funny because Neshoba is kind of a different animal, right? It's sited on Devens.
Devens, yep.
So it has never been a part of one community.
A host, right.
Yeah.
Right.
There were a lot of initial discussions a couple of years ago with the town of Spencer coming in, and one of the reasons that Spencer decided not to come here is because we couldn't grow.
Yep.
We couldn't physically grow in that, in that space. We just couldn't take on the additional staff that a town that size would have required, so.
Should have waited. Shame on them.
See?
I mean.
Well, they're still there, right?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay, and then who and how do we pay for
Right.
the displaced?
Right.
I mean, are we raising taxes?
Well, the number that Mike came up with, the thirty-eight thousand dollars would probably just be the tip of the iceberg as far as costs. You know, the town could, um, if, if all the departments were, say, for example, to be relocated to Community Hall or somewhere to go to some building or another. The thirty-eight thousand dollars, as far as Community Hall is concerned, the restrooms need renovation, we need some, um, additional ADA work. Now, we can't go, uh, we can't, um, without having an elevator in there, we can't do a complete ADA renovation. It's just, it's not possible. And an elevator itself is gonna be three hundred thousand plus. So, um, it would likely be minor fixes. The floor and the upstairs, uh, the restrooms and things, and things like that. And then, of course, partitioning spaces to make everybody, you know, to allow everybody to fit, you know, and be able to grow. So I think there's, there's a lot of considerations and I was curious to see what that initial number would be.
I know.
So, yeah.
So to, to just clarify what you just said, and we've had this conversation, and I know Bob is here, too. Hi, Bob.
Oh, well, we'll have to introduce Bob.
We do. Is it, is it, should be, we be moving forward with an understanding that the top floor of the building, which has not been used in a very long time, could with repairs only be utilized with ADA accommodation? Meaning if somebody needed to see a person who was in an office upstairs, that person upstairs would come down to the ADA compliant location.
That would have, that's what it'd have to be.
I mean, I, that's, that's the hinge.
Meeting room upstairs or anything like that?
No, you can't have a meeting room. And that's the hinge because we don't have space otherwise. Unless we can do that, I don't see
Right.
there's no way.
Do you have an estimate, ballpark guess on what you think it might cost to renovate the second?
Gary has some old players.
Yeah, so we're gonna, so we're gonna, we'll let you take a break.
Thanks.
And Gary had sent an email that I'm not sure everybody got. Um, I know some people got it maybe over the weekend. Uh, it might not have gotten forwarded to you. So Gary had a, a lot of comments about all the work and the ideas that he has had over the years that he's been here, and I, he's probably here to reiterate those. Yes?
I am.
Okay.
What was the cost, Gary, with the expansion? When you had those plans done by the architect, what was the cost with the ex- Now, this wouldn't include an expansion, but what was the estimated cost with an expansion?
One point seven.
Okay.
One point seven with.
Now, just to have, and Margaret, you're pretty much correct with the elevator. My price was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twelve thirteen. Um, so you're absolutely right. And as square footage, new construction approaches two hundred dollars, um, and you're roughly looking at three thousand to thirty-five hundred square feet of additional space. Uh, the money's gonna go up there. Now, we did look at, no, but I will say, Mike, please, um, I agree with it. But everybody's been waiting to grow in this town and we don't have the room. Now, you're displacing, uh, eight employees. You're displacing three boards and committees. And if, all of a sudden you start work on the annex, where are these people gonna go? And that's why my comment, what are you gonna do? Put trailers in the backyard? You put trailers, office trailers in the backyard, what happens to all your parking? And this is a process. So these people that have to be relocated should be relocated first.
Yeah. And it has been, it has been, and Rebecca and I, I think, have been signing off on the, um, capital improvements plan for probably three years now, and before that, it was just me,
um, that we've put in for these and each time we get shot down. Now, we did put in for, um, Margaret, I believe when you came to town to do the downstairs of the town hall for buildings and the other committees. And that was roughly just to build the rooms, forty thousand dollars. Shot down, couldn't do it. Now, the upstairs had a bad leak when I came to town. We fixed the roof, we did the insulation, we did the siding. Structurally, the building's in good shape. It's got new, a new heating system. Um, doesn't have HVAC. I mean, you, obviously you see all the portable air conditioners hanging out the window, but to make that, and it has to be handicapped accessible if you're gonna create office spaces upstairs, but it can be done. To rehabilitate what you have, um, without the cost of an elevator is roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. And then you throw the cost of that elevator and obviously two hundred and fifty to three hundred, you add a million dollars. Um, the one point seven was to virtually double the size of town hall. And actually call for the demo of the annex to make more room for it. But again, I, I welcome expansion, Michael. I know you need it. Um, but we really have to look into where we're gonna locate these other people, these other employees. And my thought is, um, that the grant should take care of that. That's my thought. Because the town, if you go to, excuse me?
It does.
No.
I understand, but my, I'm just saying, my thought is it should.
Right.
Because it should be like, if, um, if, um, uh, regional, uh, dispatch is gonna take over the building, then give us the cost by eminent domain. Give me the cost of what it's worth.
Um, so Joe just walked out, unfortunately. Do you have any sense of where on the CIPC list all of the town hall stuff is right now? Is it just on the list? I mean, sometimes they triage things, but that's not, it's just on the, okay.
We keep hearing about, and Becky could probably know better.
Or just on the list. They're not triaged. Okay.
When the big, when the big debts will be paid off, and I believe it's, it's, uh, twenty, twenty-one? So.
Twenty-three.
Ballpark, and we would obviously not, never be able to hold you to this, but to fix the floor upstairs, which might be the upstairs biggest issue, is that fair?
It is. It is. No doubt about it.
What do you think we're looking at to correct that floor and make it safe?
I think that, that's relatively inexpensive fix because it's just pulling out that old hardwood and, um, replacing.
Twenty-five hundred?
I think it's just got, because it was right under
Yeah.
uh, the couple, if you would, where the water was leaking and it just warped those centerboards.
So for floor repair upstairs, twenty-five hundred? Again, I won't hold you to it. I'm just trying to get, in my mind, what is a small number? Is it two hundred block?
No, twenty-five hundred is a small number.
Right.
No doubt about it.
Is that too small?
But I think you're looking at a full replacement of the entire floor, not just.
You don't think that floor is repairable in that location, which is what, probably six feet square, ten feet square?
I think you should, well, is it, anything's repairable, but do you want a band-aid or do you want a permanent?
Would need to be removed and replaced.
You'd have to replace it.
But the section, not the whole floor and the whole.
Oh, it's a section.
Okay. All right, so twenty-five hundred is too low? Five? I'm just trying to get.
Well, again, you're talking about just putting a patch in the middle of a floor that's a band-aid. I'm looking at something permanent if you're gonna use that building for any kind of permanency.
I, I don't know.
So I'm saying you're more like ten thousand.
Ten thousand gets us what for the floor?
The floor. Take the floor out, put new hard, hardwood in, and it's just, again, it's an estimate.
That beautiful, original floor, why would we do that?
Well, the, the center's warped. You're gonna have, you're gonna rip it out and you're gonna, we don't know what, whether the kind of damage to the other, time to grow. We don't know.
Okay, so we've got a five, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna try to get a sense here so we can come up with a number. Five to ten thousand estimate for floor repair, depending on whether we patch or replace. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. Hypothetically, I'm gonna ask this to you guys. What if our staff moved upstairs? Now, again, anyone wishing to see a member of the Board of Selectmen's Staff would have to know that they would have to come downstairs to an ADA compliant office space, which, this is a whole other question.
Not to, not to interrupt you, but if you have an employee who needs ADA access, then you've got an issue.
Yes, we do.
You can't, you can't block a whole floor and not have ADA.
Nope, you're right. And we'd have to make accommodations for that employee at that point. You're right. Yes.
So you're looking at ten thousand, say, say ten thousand on the high side for a floor, but you're still looking at two fifty, three hundred for an elevator?
Well, we, yeah. I mean, I think, I think two things already. We're probably, I, I'm hoping, no question with anybody. Obviously, the annex would have to be vacated first, all of that work done first, before anybody started talking about you and your project. Yeah. We all, I think we all knew that. And the second is, we certainly, right, we all know that building needs an addition and an elevator. It's been on the radar for years. If Anita were here, she would tell us about, right, Sally, it goes back to Sally Hayden.
Yes.
And a plan that they had to double the size and it's probably, to do it right, more like, what do you think, ten million dollar project? It's a, it's a big, it's a big deal.
Yeah, it is a big deal.
Huge deal.
I mean, right now you have on that one floor that's habitable by office space and employees, you've got seven offices, three of which are covey holes.
So I, I don't know, but the rest of you, I'm sitting here thinking that's beyond our time here, unless you guys plan on staying a lot, long time. Uh, it, it's a long-term plan.
You got a resolution, Dick?
No, it's one more problem up there that you're not looking at, too.
Yeah.
All those plans up there are supposed to be, uh, digitized and all the records up there are supposed to be all digitized and put away or, uh, you know, cleaned up. How, who's gonna do that and how long is that gonna take? And how much money is in all of that?
We would need storage area, too, for those.
Need storage.
Whatever, yeah. Because there's a lot of, a lot of permanent records that need to be in there.
Do you have any, and I know you have quite a bit up there that's semi-accessible to you when you need it. Do you have any sense of how much record space you would like to have?
I mean, probably between the, all the plans that are, that are yours for the planning board, et cetera, like that. I mean, I think maybe that backstage would
The stage?
Be packed.
The stage would be loaded?
Yeah.
Be packed.
With both, with, that's planning and
And border health is gonna
Assessors, border health, myself.
And that would be until we could digitize, although I would think some of it you're gonna wanna keep no matter what?
You gotta, you gotta keep all.
Technically, they really should be protected, too. I mean, fire safes and, and, you know, that, you mean, let it be. We have a lot of permanent records that, that need to be kept in good
There is enough space up in that area to have a records, storage area and offices.
Okay.
There's tons of room up there to have them.
And am I hearing that, I mean, we've been making do, Becky, this is yet another area where we've been making do, but the records where we're keeping them and the manner in which we're keeping them are really not up to par. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, period.
Okay. And did any, have we ever done digitizing prices? I don't know that anybody's ever, I don't remember ever having that conversation.
Anita's there to talk about it and then all of a sudden it's been hushed, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
The fire department is doing it with their senior tax work-off person. Maybe that's something that they could take on, you know, a little bit of time. They have the ability to do that.
Fire has the large scanner, yes? Is that where, everybody's nodding. Okay. But that's a, a long, kind of arduous job for somebody. Okay. Okay, so back to that question. Moving the board up, not ideal by any stretch of the imagination, but none of this is ideal. If we maybe had had the primary building, we'd be having a different conversation, but we don't.
The renovation of the restrooms is another big cost and, um, how much would you say that's gonna cost, the renovation of the
He sat down.
Restrooms.
The restroom, yeah.
The ren- oh, who, who, you, you asking me the question?
Yeah.
Yes. I don't know how much you renovated.
I mean, those restrooms are way out of date. You don't renovate. You rebuilt.
So just gut them, right? That's a gut. What, that number, that seven hundred you threw out, Gary, what did that include? What was that?
That included, um, offices downstairs.
Office, okay.
Rehabilitated offices on an existing floor.
Oh, okay.
To make more space.
Did it?
And the elevator. But that's just taking care of two floors. That's not three.
The seven hundred included the elevator?
Estimates.
So two floors of offices and the elevator? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I said that. I'm sorry. The seven, it was the seven hundred for rehab, the two fifty, and that's why I said it would bring it back up to a million.
Oh, 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 oh. So two floors of offices you felt were about seven hundred. What's the, what's the number right now for renovation per square foot? I think you just said two hundred.
Roughly a hundred and seventy-three dollars a square foot for construction.
About.
And don't forget we have to procure under chapter one forty-nine prevailing wage and all that other fun stuff.
So more like two hundred. Okay. Do we know, what is the square footage of that basement? What's the footprint of the building?
Of the, just the basement and town hall?
But, yeah.
That was, um, it's eighty by thirty.
Eighty by thirty.
No, I'm sorry, sixty by thirty, so that's what he can earn. Minus the lolly columns.
Eighteen hundred. Mine, I'll, I'll note that. And, okay. How much does the planning board have right now in your room? Do you know? It's a fairly new, newish space since we
Well, Mike would probably have that. I think he doesn't.
More than they had before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
More than before.
Oh, yeah.
But not, still not great.
Still not. Still not.
Yeah.
Peter, you know?
I don't know, but I actually want to point out that they have a lot of records that are not in that space today.
Right, they're upstairs.
No, I'm talking about the things that are out in the hallway.
Yeah.
All the cabinets in the hallway.
Yeah, the planned, planned piles.
Fair enough, okay, yeah, you got some...
You actually have another question?
Can you do name and address for us?
Sure.
You know where the cameras are, are you on camera right now?
If Paul's in there doing his job, I'll bet you, I, I bet I'm out there with Gary, too. Now, Peter Crain makes way, one of the things that struck me is, I don't know about the sequencing, but we're about to have a space in the public safety building open up if this move happens, so is it possible to play shuffle games so that a department or two that needs to move out of the annex could move into that space? He says, hoping he doesn't upset the police chief and the fire chief right now.
I, I don't think you would upset them, but the fact is that that building should be, if anything, more secure than it already is, not less.
And is, and is already pending requests from the Fire Department for renovation of space, and let's not forget, the Fire Chief currently sits in the Police Department, so...
Which isn't optimal.
Yeah, so there's, there's some work that needs to be done there to give those existing departments more space each.
But that was a fair question, I mean, I think the other fair question that came up from somebody who's not here right now, and since we're here in the building, is there is an empty room here in the library, right? There's actually two stor, very large rooms here in the library, but that's a question for the trustees, less than, more so than us.
It's, it's actually a worse problem than that, because you have to remember that the town clerk needs to get election equipment in through the back door diagonally across the room, into the room where the voting takes place.
Diagonally?
If we're talking about, if we're talking about that backspace that's unfinished?
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying, we, that blocking off, making it unpassable for her, or make it impossible to have elections here. Or virtually.
Okay.
Make it a hallway.
I mean, that's a...
There are ways around it, I'm just...
That's a big room, but you're saying she takes it diagonally through the hall?
Yeah, because, because the two doors, the one on the outside is on one corner, and to get into Blair Room is kitty corner.
Oh, okay.
Nothing that can't be fixed with a little construction.
Yeah, nothing that can't be fixed when the town wins the lottery.
Dispatch and...
No, ideally, and you'd see this in most, in most other communities, typically, the general government departments are situated in the same building, when at all possible, that hasn't existed here, and it would be, it'd be really nice, kind of a, you know, along the lines of, of central service, so to speak, to at least have the department situated in the same building, if at all possible, so, anyway, that's just not too sensitive.
So, curiosity, everybody's worried about space, why don't we just put up, like they do at the school when it's overcrowded, put up a classroom for a couple of years, oversized classroom, and move everybody into that for a couple of years, till we get everything back where we want it to be?
Your, your, the trailer thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where do you put it?
Right behind, right behind the...
It's going to take up parking space, because you have to put it in the parking lot.
All right, they put it down on the lawn, right down here on the grass.
I mean, our...
Memorial Field.
Put it at DFW.
How the old, old school used to be.
That parking lot.
Okay, so let's, let's jump off of the trailers. I mean, if we, if we found a spot, and I think I actually didn't get the answer yet, but if we had a spot for BOS, which takes up a good chunk of the building right now, right, Abby, you have a huge office. And we, our big concern is you, right? I'm looking at you, planning, CONCOM, with your big plans and building inspections, and everybody from those departments, to Margaret's point about, right, the, the building departments, you all need...
You guys have land use together.
Land use. Need enough space that you have got the big table, and you can roll out plans and spread out. I think the question is, is the square footage, if the whole basement were given over to land use and made something different than what it was today, would it put you in a better position than you are? And let's, and let's set records aside, because I think that's, we have to talk about that separately, clearly across every building, but... I don't, you don't have to, like, final, but...
You really could only answer that if you kind of know the square footage right now.
I know, so we think...
And we, we looked at it.
Well, you've been in there, so you know the size of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's eighteen hundred minus several things, hallway and bathroom.
First of all, you know, if you start partitioning things off, my guess is, the heating system is not going to function as it would need to.
You need some sort of dehumidifier.
Probably, yes, humidity problems. Once again, there's no air conditioning, you want to add on about three or four more window conditioners, you know, jack up the electric bills more.
And the entrance door for ADA to come in, to me, it should be on the outside, because the, that second door takes up space coming in.
The downstairs door, it is not ADA compliant, we already checked that out, there would have to be some movement of that little, whatever you want to call it, caboose coming in or whatever.
So what you just said is a problem for us today, regardless of what we do, we have meetings down there all the time. Okay.
Actually, and recreation would then be displaced, because they've got a lot of activities that, if it rains outside, I mean, it's only in the summertime, but they have a lot of storage and a lot of activities that go on when it rains in the basement, so they would be displaced if we did that.
And there's that big wooden cabinet that I think belongs to a Boy Scout troop, yes, name and address.
Carol Marktans, Pleasantville Road, you know. Maybe this is something that needs a small committee to have some meetings, I mean, there is a thousand, we could go on for days without stopping. You know, we have, I don't know, three or five or eight people, maybe one from each committee, I mean, that's kind of a roundtable with lunch and some rulers and pencils and, you know...
I think an entire building assessment, because we, you know, I know, one of the things people look for is want, or are talking about a senior center, and they, we want to renovate this, and we want, there's, the entire town buildings need to be assessed, and we need to prioritize and come up with a, a real plan as to what, what we're going to do, because we need a solution instead of patching the floor and making everybody and putting everybody in the basement, we need a, a complete solution, and we need to look at the entire picture of the town and where we're going with buildings.
Your goals and objectives.
We need to do that.
A number one.
Yeah, it's in there, it's in there, and I think the response to that is, yeah, you are a hundred percent right, I guess, what we're going to end up with at the end of it, no matter what we do, is something like a twenty-five year plan, so it doesn't necessarily help us with what we're talking about with Mike tonight, but I get it, I totally agree, and we had response from CIPC in regards to Margaret's recommendation for that building committee, so I think that's moving forward, hopefully, we'll even put that on our next agenda, so to your point, yeah, we're going to move forward with that, no question, to do the full audit, we saw Henry, we saw Harry Sackman's response, Joe Becker also sent in a response, so hopefully, when the board gets a chance to read both of those, and we get a better picture of what we need as far as the people on that committee, we can put that out, open it up, set the committee next, next meeting.
And I realize Mike needs to expand, but do we want to do, look at the whole picture first before we, we can commit to that, I'm just saying.
No, Becky, can we borrow a hundred million dollars in the next twelve months, or, you know?
I mean, it has to be looked at, you know, there are some debt things that are falling off our schedule that we...
And, and also mentioned, eight more dispatches, that's eight cars, plus they're going to intermingle when they're coming and going, where are you going to put twelve cars extra in that? Especially come summertime, people are going to park for way to go to the swimming pool. You, you have problems, big problems.
Why, why aren't they having problems, too? Harry, was that, was that a fair statement what I just said about?
Would you repeat that, please?
We heard back, we saw your comments to Margaret regarding the building committee, the townwide property, right? And then Joe had also responded, so we have both of those, and I think, to take those to heart, I think what we'll do, and we can invite you back if you want, is our next meeting, we will set that committee, hopefully, with a charge, and really figure out the makeup of it, because I think your concern was, you didn't necessarily want CIPC to be part of it right away, and I, I understood what you were saying, I'm not sure, we'll have that conversation.
Yeah, our big issue by recommending that was that the CIPC was not tasked to do that, so therefore, because we look so far out, we know there are building issues, we didn't want to start getting into those building issues on our own, so our recommendation is to have a separate committee that we can work with to say, okay, this building should go up in two thousand twenty-five, this building should go up in, what will we have? So that was the purpose of it, and not necessarily CIPC involvement on the committee. And I read Joe's comments, and valid comments, it's just that I didn't want to see CIPC getting involved in something and then coming back and saying, oh, yeah, we skipped everything else, and we put this on the agenda.
Yeah, I saw, I could, I understood, yeah.
You want to be able to take that committee's recommendations.
Right, and work through it as time goes on and that stuff, but absolutely need something like that, we can't do it.
Yeah.
It's not, not for you.
I, I appreciate all that, that's very true, so...
I was, I just wanted to comment, the other thing is, if there's repairs, renovations to the community hall, I don't know what grants are currently available for rehabbing the old town halls, but I know Sterling was able to get some money from something for their eighteen thirty-five building or whatever, and it was a substantial amount, not substantial in the scheme of what we're talking, but it was a substantial chunk, so if it's something that is on the horizon for Rutland anyway, can we have a realistic view of this will last us at least the next ten years to get us to another point where hopefully, we have a more solid plan in place to expand as we need to expand? I think that that's, I don't know.
So, so the town might want to consider a professional assessment, I know you're talking about a committee, but to be able to start with that framework, that a professional assessment would provide for all the buildings, and then that committee can take that and make further recommendations, with the money that's going to be reallocated at the start of FY twenty from, no, I'm sorry, actually, this year, that's going to start being reallocated from the dispatch taking on the town of Warren and not having to expand, some of that money may be able to be utilized for a professional assessment.
Margaret also commented to, somebody was saying about it, about regarding grants, if you look, if you look it up, it was actually just in July that the current administration awarded over fourteen point seven million dollars in green communities grants, and if you look at the list...
Take care of your heating system.
The list is extensive, so we are one of two hundred and ten communities that now, you know, are getting towards, getting green communities, I think we could, we could access that money, we just need to get ourselves into that grant round, maybe it's time to call back our new CIPC member and say, we have a project for you.
Well, actually, Laura Scannell has been working really hard with, with CMRPC and with Green Communities Division on, on getting us all situated to get, to get some grant monies, but yeah, the first hundred and fifty thousand dollar check can be, can be put toward whatever priority projects we, we designate, so that could very well be one of them.
So I think still the question of the board is, and we can put a pin in this and wait and, and talk about it more at next meeting, we have things that we know we're going to do relative to the long-term planning that Becky brought up, but to Mike's request tonight, is there action to take tonight? Or you want to, what do you need him to do, and then we would have him come back, answer more questions and...
Well, I think he's, he's taking as far as he can take it in his capacity, we've only got a half a proposal, fifty percent of the proposal, it's the other fifty percent of the problem that, that we're going to struggle with, it's not going to be answered tonight
Right.
with a vote. I think Becky has a great point, I think Margaret has a great point, it's, it's only about the money, it's all about the money, if we can get some money, some money to come in to remedy the problem with Community Hall, then it's a no-brainer, but right now, I think it's kind of crummy on the state to put us in this position, whereas, you know, hey, we need, we have all these needs, but now we have to worry about, we're going to come up with one point seven million dollars, which will probably be two or three times that, you know? It's all about the money, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to get behind anything that's going to raise taxes, so...
What would the board think about, Carol had a great idea, some sort of a little task force, you know, or an ad hoc committee, just putting together an ad hoc committee to talk about potential grant funding, to talk about, and this is something maybe CMR, CIPC could even participate in, to talk about what the next steps are toward this assessment, so if you could put together a little task force to really identify some clear targets, the, the funding, the space needs, the priorities, and how you're going to move toward getting a professional assessment done? I think it's a good idea.
What does it take for a professional assessment?
You would contract with, you would contract with a consultant?
Yeah.
Yeah, a building's expert, could be an architect, or engineer, or there are firms out there that actually do that.
What, what help, if any, could the, the new town planner put into the process here?
He may be able to help seek some grant funding, I don't know that he'd actually be able to weigh in on building condition so much, but he might be valuable in the process to talk about next steps.
If, Mike, what was your timeline, when, if you had, if you had your choice, the timeline, I'm trying to find it, for getting into the building to begin renovation work was what?
Two thousand twenty, twenty, uh...
What?
Twenty, uh, twenty nineteen, November, November.
More over a year.
Yes.
Sorry.
The March of twenty twenty is actually...
November twenty nineteen, so a little over a year. And all, okay. I'm just thinking ahead in terms of what, what Jeff just said, finding money, the grant cycle, which would cut it too close, we might get the grant, but to wait to see if we get it would put us in a position where we weren't ready. And, and to your point, Carol, that's something that I think, yeah, maybe we can have an ad hoc committee, I'm just sitting here thinking how we need to back into this in terms of a deadline.
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
Isn't everything yesterday?
That's the way we go. I mean, is, is Fall Town Meeting too aggressive to have this conversation?
I don't think Fall Town Meeting would be too aggressive to move on the path of having a building assessment done, so in, for, in other words, funding it.
Yeah.
Coming up with funding.
Yeah.
It can always be pushed to another grant, so... But assessments are going to continue to rise unless I can find other ways of reducing them, there's not many out there at this point besides bringing on communities, so if town assessments are going to rise, unless I can find other revenue sources to come into the center.
Yeah, I, I'm getting the sense that this is another one of those things that we have to work this, if we're planning on doing this, we need to move ahead with this and figure out what it's going to take, but we also need to do all of those long-term things that some of the others are talking about.
Build around solutions.
Separate tracks, yeah, long-term solutions, because ultimately, the long-term solution Because ultimately, the long-term solution most likely is the rec moving out of any of our buildings, right? And building their own, but that's a long way off. So, okay. All right, so actions for anyone could, I, I guess, is it too much to ask for the planning board to maybe... Could you let us know where everything is and how much space it's currently taking up? Does that make sense? You have your office, you have space outside, you have some things in file cabinets, you have some stuff upstairs, right? Is that, is that it?
Do you want us to give you a space requirement?
Sure. Yeah, yes.
New town planner, for an office for him too.
Okay. Okay.
Now you realize...
All right, that's the whole bottom floor of the community hall then.
The planner, Mike, the planner might be able to, well, that's another conversation, but okay. Thank you.
You mean the basement, right?
You realize office space we still share with Concom.
Yep, so we'll need to, could we get that out to Concom as well? Ask them what their current, their current storage uses are and where, and how much space they need. And, oh yeah, he's right there. You're here, you're here in this.
RDIC is in there too, right?
RDIC's in there?
No, they just...
We're just meeting there.
They don't keep things in there, right?
Uh, there's a few folks there, but that's...
I'm sure they would appreciate a little bit of file space though, wouldn't they?
Yeah, okay.
Would not be a bad idea.
Okay, RDIC and the Building Department, the three inspectors. Let's ask them all where everything is, how much space they have now, and then Mike, you're going to work on getting us more numbers and putting some thought into a window as an option maybe?
Yes.
For some of us.
Michael plug in, finish plugging in numbers to his productive cost.
Yeah. And then this board needs to work on the formation of an ad hoc task force, which we'll, we'll, we'll put that on our next agenda with a charge and then we can put out a request for it, see if we can get on it, as well as the larger building.
Why don't we put the request out now for anybody interested in it?
Yeah, what do you want the number to be?
Get it out there.
Yeah, so you, so you make the motion for an ad hoc committee creation.
I'll make the motion for an ad hoc committee creation.
No, who do you know?
Yeah, you should do, yeah, you should, I think, I think the board should develop a charge, charge in composition for your next meeting.
He could make the motion and charge could be to be determined.
But I think folks have a sense of, folks have a sense of what you're looking to do short term here.
Yeah, all right, we'll do it next week, two weeks.
Yeah, but if we don't, it's two weeks more down the road.
I know, I know.
So if you don't get it out there, at least let people out there know that we're looking for people to do this. Maybe, maybe to set up a committee or something.
Okay, let's...
Let's get it going. I mean, let's be real.
All right, so let's do this.
Two weeks now, two weeks later, two weeks, and next year is here.
The, the only problem is when we put the request out, or I was going to say if it makes it into the press, whatever, people won't necessarily know what their goal is if they don't have it yet. So that's the only thing, but we could come up with...
I feel like the committee should be made up of stakeholders though, for this particular phase.
Okay.
The people that represent departments.
Yeah.
And, and boards and committees that are going to have some stake in moving forward with a building assessment.
So, is that something we can structure tonight and formulate the charge after the fact?
That's, that's a longer conversation, it's already...
Maybe just broaden out that motion a little bit and...
Mike, I have a question for you. In your, in this initial plan, where the Building Department is, it would be the empty, but you wouldn't be using it, correct, right away?
I want to say, nah, it'd be their break room slash training room, so yes and no?
I'm just thinking with a small renovation, you could, you could keep the Building Department there for a while.
We'd have to find another entrance to the Building Department because the dispatch floors all CDR compliance, they would have to all be fingerprinted, take tests to just even walk into the center.
You just, you just put a door here, separate it. I already have it thrown out.
But Mike, you know, to, to, to his point, to Wayne's point, I think it would be helpful if the person who did this can do this relative to the whole building. Because the other option you would have is pushing this over a little bit. Because you've already got that space that you had to set aside for what, you know, the mechanicals and all that could, could pack it. There's a door there too, so could that be made bigger?
It's, it's already in the process of doing the rest of it. You just didn't have enough time to finish it for this meeting.
So you're coming back to us? When are you coming back?
As soon as it's done. I don't know. I'm not sure.
You're going to get on our agenda when it's ready.
Yes.
Okay, so, and so he's not quite there yet. In the interim, we can do our ad hoc committee, to Margaret's point. It should probably be stakeholders, which gets us up to at least five people right up the bat. It's probably bigger than that.
It's bigger.
Lot bigger.
If I, I just listed up some that would probably have, want to have a say in this, and that would be FinCom, member of FinCom, member of CIPC, treasure collector, or a, another representative from Community Hall, DPW director, representative from planning, representative from Concom, representative from inspections, and the town administrator.
I have a question, and I know this has been kind of tossed around, joked around a little bit, but is there, if the development grant is covering rehab of that building, renovations of that building, is there any additions to that building? Does it cover additions also? It only covers re-renovations?
No new construction.
No new construction.
Because I was going to say, is there any additions that could be put on there that would create more space, that would satisfy renovations?
Okay, so to Margaret's point, Skip, are you all right with that? That on the 10th we'll build that?
Just call for a representative from each, get it, and start working.
Okay, and we'll have the charge ready? Great. So that's on our next agenda. Okay, can we, are we moving on from this? Yes, no?
I have a thing for you guys. You just mentioned about the trustees and the library, about that back room. I'm putting it on you people to get an answer, because I've heard this brought up many times and I've never heard what the outcome is of it.
Well, what are we asking?
The other room, on the other side of Blair Room.
Yep.
Is that something that we could use as a town, you know?
Only with permission from them.
So let's make that part of the, no, but you know what?
How is that? I mean, the whole town is paying for this building. So how are they got their fingers on all of it? Why aren't they just upstairs?
You're telling me we can't even get a key for the building?
Okay, anyway, let's, let's make that part of the task force. That's going to be one of their goals, because that will absolutely change the way space considerations are taken in, right? If we have a, a space that a department wants and it happens to be at the library and the library says, "Well, yes, based on what you value," we don't know that yet, so we'll add that. I'm looking at you, Carol, because I'm getting the sense you want to be on this task force.
No, that's fine. I'm listening.
All right, anything else? No? Okay. It's time for public comment, okay? Not on that topic. We're all on that topic.
Yes. Paul? I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. First of all...
Name and address, Paul.
I'll preface my remarks, I'm Paul Mattson, by the way, from Cable Committee.
Thank you.
That's the hat I'm wearing tonight.
Thank you.
A couple of things I'd like to say. First of all, I'll preface my comments by saying, my wife and I are pretty regular walkers around the center of town here now. And I think last Friday, my wife made the comment to me that the crosswalks in the center of town have become very user-friendly, okay? So hats off to you guys, I guess. Okay, the reason that I'm here tonight is to talk about this room and the problems that we've been having with water. We just had a second occasion where the area was flooded. And we have been trying our best to come up with an idea as to what can be done to ease the situation or make it better. We, the Cable Committee, are putting a fair amount of funding into the library and to the town for this area. And we kind of feel that maybe something better could be done to help alleviate the situation with the exit door right here. If you look at the molding here on the door, door casing, it is separated. And also, if you look at the mopboard outside the door in the same area, it is separated from the wall as well, okay? These are things that, you know, an awful lot of my time and effort, along with my committee's, previous and current committees' time and effort have gone into this area. And so what we're trying to get a handle on is, all right, I understand that the library is, the trustees hold this area and the town is responsible for outside the building. So what I'm asking, I think, is that the town should look into, does this area outside here need to be regraded? Does the roof need to be redone? Do the gutters along the side, does the soffit need to be redone? Do the fascia need repairs or what? There's something that's causing the flooding here. After the second, first occasion, the ground was frozen, there was ice, everything else, maybe. The second occasion, the ground was thawed and, you know, the water could be absorbed into the ground and it still came in under the door. So I think that, you know, somewhere along the line, the board has to come together and say something about getting a fix to the area outside of the door here before any more damage occurs. And I would be most welcome to any suggestions that come about and would be more than happy to take part in any conversation that comes about. And on Wednesday night this week, two days from now, the Cable Committee will be meeting. And I would like to invite our liaison and any other member of the board to come to our meeting so that we can sit down and discuss possible changes in funding to the town and to the library for whatever is going on here until the situation gets remedied. Thank you. Yes.
What has, what has changed, Paul, that we know of? Why would the flooding just start this year? I don't, what's, what's changed? Why would there not have been flooding every year up to now?
What's changed that's causing the flooding?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know. I am, I don't, I don't understand what it is. I sat here in one rainstorm and it wasn't flooding that rainstorm, okay? This was on a Saturday, it would have been a week ago yesterday, or two weeks ago yesterday. Well, this past Saturday, rather. And I sat here and I watched the rain for a while and it was coming off the roof very naturally. And like I say, it was not flooding at that point in time. The following Tuesday, however, it did flood, okay? And that's what caused the problem here. And so all of these things that have come about, could the landscape be changed? Could the grading of the property outside be changed? I don't know. I, I, I don't have a good suggestion there. But I really think that, you know, somebody has to look into what's going on out there.
Do we know where the water's coming in?
It was coming in underneath this door over here.
Through the door.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. The librarian, head librarian will attest to the fact that it was coming in because she was here and she was watching it.
So I have an odd question for you. Do you have an extra camera, like a long-running camera, that we can train on the door or outside the door when a rain, we know a rainstorm is coming, so that we can see what's happening, like as far as the water flow goes? Because what, again, I, I don't, Skip, you really think it's just the building settling? Why would water suddenly...
I think we could say there's cement slab that's outside the door, remove it.
I agree.
So the water can run by it instead of hitting it and rolling it in the, in the building.
But that's fine, but then, but why is the slab, you think the slab is suddenly high enough just because of settling? It shifted.
It's only a little block of concrete, about three feet by three feet, about that thick.
So whose job is that? Library or DPW?
I don't think so. I think the library's inside the four walls and the town is outside the four walls. That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but that's what I understand.
We can't do nothing inside, but we can do everything outside.
Okay, but either way, it's costing taxpayers money. So can we, is there a quick and dirty Band-Aid? I know we don't like Band-Aids, but what's the quick fix for that door?
I will, I will get in touch with Bay Path.
French drain.
Uh, because they'll be starting school two more days, okay?
Right, but...
To come out and to do, to repair work to the door frame and that sort of thing, okay?
Okay, okay.
Um, but otherwise than that, we're, we're responsible for the inside and I will continue to be responsible for the inside.
No, right, but we're talking about the outside and...
So Gary comes up with a backhoe and just wrapped it with a backhoe and ripped the damn thing out of there.
Put in a French drain with a drainage system or a pit. And an upset.
And an upset.
Now, the roof, the bits for the roof are scheduled to be open next week. Paul, I did meet with Kerry and we, we know there's a problem with these gutters and downspouts. So we have to see where all that goes. It could be just a matter of getting up there and see if they're clogged and the water's running over the drainage system. So that's what it takes and that's what it's going to take to fix it.
But either way, if water gets right now onto that slab, it is getting in the building. So gutters or not, it seems like we should, all right. So, okay, is that a...
But there's also, I mean, not, not, not a rubber, a rubber-filled sandbag just to block that door or divert the water for now, until we, until our construction season winds down. I had two people in today, you know, I, I just, it's what it is.
So can we do a rubber-filled sandbag this week?
Well, we can put something just to block it and divert the water from going in the door.
Great.
For now.
For now. And then second step, French drain, what you just said?
French drain, I just think a French drain should be, now we've had a very, and everybody knows we've had a very, very, very wet...
Wet, very...
Season. It's just unbelievable amount of water we're getting everywhere, so...
You're all kidding.
Okay.
So that's, that's Paul, I will...
I understand.
Now, get your messages and we will work on it.
Okay, so Paul, you've got a three-step process here. We're going to do a quick temporary sandbagging to get the water out because we've got to do something. Then Gary's going to take a look at French drain to fix the outside. And then the roof project is a larger project that's going to fix hopefully a lot of things, so...
We can leave it at that for now.
Okay, well...
You know, we'll continue to work at it, but I just want to make the board aware of what the problems have been and where we're going. And, you know, like I say, on Wednesday night, we'll sit here and look at what we're going to do.
You've got to take care of the other leak that I saw in that electronics room also. That has to be rectified.
That's, that's, that's another issue. I've got Charter working on that. They're going to move things around for us.
But the water's still coming in.
The water's still coming in.
The wall, fine, that's still, but it's still coming in through, through the wall.
What do you mean, through the wall?
In the, uh, in the closet that we first had, we called home when we first moved into this building out back here, yes. The outside wall is wet and it has been all along. This time around, it was dripping down onto our cabling and it made me quite nervous. And I kept running through here with paper towels and everything else, trying to keep everything dry and picked up. And we finally invented a, a way for the water to run over it and...
Oh my God, Paul.
Onto the floor.
What is, what is your agreement with the library relative to your space? Is it your space and your responsibility at this point?
Yes.
Yes.
Basically, we create, we create funding.
Yeah.
For the library to, in other words, part of what we pay goes to the town for the square footage of...
Right.
And insurance and this sort of thing.
You're renting the space.
And there is another part that goes to the library for their own use.
Okay. Okay. I mean, this clearly is starting from outside somewhere, so apparently it's our problem.
Well, you know, like I said, the issue is, you know, Gary's offered a suggestion here tonight, that's fine. You know, let's start in that direction and see where we go.
Well, that helps us with the door, but I guess it doesn't help you with your electric, your tech room.
I'm sorry?
It helps with the door. It doesn't help with the tech room, right? We don't, you think the water's coming through the wall?
That's going to have to come from outside as well, okay? So in other words, you know, if there are, it appears that there's tubes that run up the side, outside of the wall, where the cable comes down and into the building. Somewhere there is a breach there or something and the water gets into it and it comes down, runs onto the floor. It's, it was doing that when we were there.
Every rainstorm? Every single rain?
Is it coming down the cable TV's piping?
One of them, yes. Then there is also the phone...
Then you got to call up and get them out here and tell them to fix it.
There is also the phone company cabling coming into the building. I'll leave it at that right now because I can't remember just exactly what the sequence of everything is in the room, but...
You think the utilities might have caused the leak? Are you saying that?
I'm sorry?
Do you think the utilities caused the leak because of their installations?
About what caused the leak?
The phone cable.
Well, it's coming down the tube that cables come down. In other words, the cables come into the building.
Yeah.
And they come into the building down through tubes and it's sealed off in, in the room.
Yeah.
And the water fills up the tube apparently and seeps through the...
Well, that's their issue then.
Yeah.
They want to come out here.
I disagree with that wholeheartedly. Not from what I saw, I was there.
You think it's a building issue?
Or you can still, you can still see the floor is wet, if you want to go over there and look.
Through the wall and coming underneath where the wall sits on the floor.
Yep.
Okay, all right, we need to...
In other words, there's no drainage around the foundation? I wasn't here when they built the library. I was against the building or library way back then.
That's a different story.
Yes.
Uh, all right, you think, that's, so we just heard that first answer. He thinks it's coming, seeping in through the foundation, but that would mean it would, it's going up. That would mean your water is traveling up on the pipe.
No, no, it's going down the wall, getting to the bottom, into the basement, seeping all the way through that whole wall.
Where, where the pipe and the ground come together outside, I don't know. Normally, there is about a two, three or four inch extension of the pipe above ground. I'm not sure what's out there right now, whether it's flush or still, still there or not.
What's our low-tech solution to what you just heard? Plastic and duct tape or, I don't...
Well, I don't know if, I mean, I can only assume that I wasn't here when the library was built either, that that would have been a part of the plan for any utilities to be put through the foundation as it's poured, as opposed to, as opposed to bored later on. So I don't know how they did that. So I'll just have to check, because it could be just a spackle. It could be styrofoam backing with a, with a spackle code, but I'll have to check it, Paul.
It is. I know it is. Okay, I, I will, but I'm not going to go there.
Okay, all right. I don't know if it has a permanent drain. I really don't know if this building has a permanent drain or not.
I understand.
We heard everything...
And you want to move over here, Dick? You're sure about that with all your plans?
We heard everything, it's going to be in our minutes. But could you put this into an email to us with the specifics? So we have it from your...
On Wednesday night when the committee meets, if anybody wants to come and I'll show you what's, what's out there.
It's going to be raining Wednesday?
That's fine. No, I'll be glad to do whatever. And like I said, I'm inviting our liaison and any other member of the board that wants to come to the committee on Wednesday night to please come enjoy us. Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. All right, anybody else? Public comment?
Yes.
Please. Just give me a second.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's right. We were giving any.
A bunch of passes down, the X is right beside that. It's something that the ring's found when he was looking through this. About the, the heights property. I don't know if, uh, he was gonna send a copy or Mike was gonna send a copy over to your office, but I don't know if it got there or not. And it's, it's about water piping on the road from eight inch to, what, twelve inch or something like that, forty-two hundred feet. This funding that, you know, apparent legislation and all that and, and he said, what the heck? But I'll leave that up to Gary. Gary just fill me in, so I'll let Gary tell you about that.
So just for the record, this says. Session Law, Acts of 2014, Chapter 79. From Maple Avenue through the Rutland Heights Hospital property and passed it, that five hundred thousand dollars shall be expended for design and permitting to approve. Safety, and then there's a continuation, it's not all here, for the replacement of forty-two hundred linear feet of eight inch. Iron water main with twelve inch, something probably. Whatever we don't do, do, whatever we do now instead of iron. Is there, so did, is there some thought that Doug had that Tom Dufour, this wasn't part of the scope?
I refer that to Gary, please, on that.
Say it.
Well, Gary, fill me in on it.
Twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, two thousand fourteen, I believe, Shirley, you may, once I, once I talk about a little leak problem, then you ever collect what was going on. Because I applied for a nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar grant to do complete rehabilitation from Maple Ave. Through the heights on the road that the DPW built, um, continuing through the school property to Main Street. Um, and a piece of that, um, that was interesting when that, when all then become a town road. When I'm going through Senator Goby's office, um, I was told it went through all the approval processes and I was sitting on Deval Patrick's desk at the time waiting for the appropriation of funds. And I couldn't get any answers, and this is the first time that I've seen that that was approved. Um, tonight in two thousand fourteen, but only for five hundred. I put in for nine forty-seven.
What can you do with five hundred?
Well, I could do a lot with five hundred.
Okay.
You can do a lot with, but the problem, the issue would, um, I guess would be, um, maybe Margaret or Bob. Bob, welcome, Bob. Mr. Reed, welcome. Um, is to find out what it would take to, to take that road, that access road through the school and make it a town road. I don't know. I'm not familiar with that part of it. That would have to be taken over by the town. I don't believe that that grant money can be used for school property.
Well, this is just for design and permitting. It's not for construction, correct?
Well, nine, nine forty-seven was taking care of everything, everything, all the way straight through, including a new top course of pave which wasn't done by decan. On the original Rutland Heights way, which also involves the raising of structures.
What, what site is that from?
You know, if I could, um, Wayne and, and Dick, if, if I can get a copy of that, then I will contact the senator's office and, um, and again, look back through the application process when I applied for the grants.
So that's from DEP. If I, and I mean, I'm just looking up quickly. This is hard to find. I don't see it. Yeah.
Hey, just type in X of two thousand fourteen, seventy-nine.
I did. I did.
And it's thirty pages long?
It's long. Oh, there it is. This says nine. Wait, where is that? Oh, that was Hubbardston. Nope. No, that was, it's nine. It's nine hundred. That two hundred Hubbardston, nine hundred thousand dollars shall be expended to design, reconstruct, restore, resurface and make improvements to the roadways and sidewalks. Pedestrian, bicycle and school traffic, including da-da-da-da-da. Fire hydrants, Maple Avenue through the Rutland Heights Hospital property, past Central Tree Middle School and Naqog Elementary School. It says nine.
Well, that's hard, yeah. I don't know where the five came from. I put in for, well, nine forty-seven, but I would have taken the nine.
Uh.
And this is from two thousand fourteen?
That's when it finally was signed, obviously. I don't know when you submitted it.
Yeah, 'cause Patrick was still in office and he's the one that, who's, he's the person whose signature we were waiting for.
Um. Sorry, I can't, I can't necessarily tell looking at this. It was approved April eighteenth. That's where DEP got their information. But it might have changed and gone back up to the nine when it went through committee, but then you're saying you're not sure if the governor's office signed it and I.
I was told by Ann Goby that it was sitting on the governor's desk waiting for signature.
But that was many years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Ann's office, um, or, or Baker's offices are gonna be able to give you a, an answer on this.
Okay. All right.
So we don't know if it got passed over or funded and we just don't know about it?
No, I don't.
That's, there's no, okay. Be very unusual for a grant that size to not be recognized by the local politicians and they would come out and it seems like somebody would make a big deal of that.
Seems pretty odd.
And she was on it, 'cause Ann and I went back and forth.
Right.
For many, many, many months to see where the money was. That was first called in, I think it was called into the annex and, and somebody told, um, them being the state that we weren't interested. And we had, we had to really do a lot of shuffling around, Cheryl. I'm surprised you don't remember that and Skip.
I do, I remember that.
I'd have to assume that if it didn't get funded, that it's done or whatever.
Right, but then we, we really had to do some, uh, some quick work and I had to get some quick prices on, on actually three projects. And one of them was the work at the Sharnak Hill Tunnel on, um, on.
Well, that I remember. That I remember. She was trying to get you basically an earmark. These are all earmarks.
Yeah, but where the, the first phone calls came in and you remember me shuffling papers and making a lot of phone calls because somebody in the, one of the town buildings said that we weren't interested. I don't know, so.
I do, I know.
Which doesn't matter. Anyway, the work got done. And all the paperwork was filed for on time.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I will, I'll, I'll check.
So we're gonna find out.
I'll see if I can get a copy of that.
Next, Dick.
Next thing, um, just to let you know, uh, the last meeting, I, I took a walk with Kurt Leslie. I'll just, I'll send it to him and let you pass down. He made up a, a map and, and, uh, top of. Glenwood School, you might be able to get another field into the woods. And that's all, just one little field that, with so much wetlands in the, as soon as you got in there, you saw it right off the bat. Top of Rice Hill, Kurt had pointed out, there's approximately almost a thousand feet that you could go back on that. So that's a pretty good distance on top of the Rice Hill. That's where the water tanks are.
Do we have access off?
Off of Wheeler Road and also it does show.
Central Tree too, correct?
Huh? Central Tree, I was just gonna say, here's Skyline Drive and here's that flat area of the old, the state hospital. Sanatorium, the state sanatorium.
See that too.
It's right there.
But isn't there access to, uh, Central Tree further down?
Used to be. No, none anymore.
Boy, it used to be.
Yes, but the good old days.
You build it.
Yeah. And Rutland Heights, we, uh, took a ride up there. Uh, I, I wasn't feeling, uh, well enough to go hiking in the woods. But between Naqog and Central Tree, he feels that even though there's a wetland crossing in there, there should be enough room for another good sized field. Um, on, on the Central Tree side up to that wetland. So there might be room in there, plus the other one that we talked about between the heights and Central Tree. That area right near is also a very good place. But, uh, just to his, this thing was, and, and when you're talking about the, the buildings and everything else here, he says. It's time for maybe the board to sit down and think. Where are they gonna put the next school? And find a spot that can handle maybe an extra twenty acres for athletic field, but. Yeah, you're gonna have to find a good flat spot. Where the heck are you gonna find that? It's, it's very hard. It's gonna be very hard in this community to look, look for a place like that. And, uh, but that was his feelings, you know, that if they can wait, they're gonna need a school eventually because, uh. Gonna have a lot of houses in another ten, fifteen years, so maybe the town needs to purchase a sizable piece of property now for something in the future.
Stop building houses.
Building, Elsie.
He's laughing. Could we?
Yeah.
Do we have a copy of that paper you showed us from the DEP? Did that end up?
Totally, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, my last thing was. In my spare time, all the town properties are right there and I'm, I made drawings and everything else. And I asked Gary on this, this is White Hall Road where the red mark is. And, uh, he does not plow it. Why are we still owning that two acres, two points something acres? Why isn't the town selling it? Or trading it for gravel bank someplace?
What are we doing with it? What?
The town owns a piece of, of, a lot.
Yeah.
Why aren't we selling it?
Because somebody will build a house on it and cost us more money.
How are they gonna, how are they gonna get electricity to it? And the town does not plow it.
Why would they buy it? The deal with the trade station was?
Uh, on the other side of the track, up higher.
Trade, the station was on that side?
No, on the, yes, on the other side.
So maybe that was part of it.
I don't believe so. I think it was taken by taxis.
Before the state took the lead?
Yeah, and, and where your other finger is is. Yeah, it's, it's a listing of, uh. I don't know whereabouts it is in there, but it's. And if you don't mind, I'd like to have that back, but take a look at it. I'll pick it up some other day. That's it. Amen. Brother Ben, I'm sitting down.
Okay.
Thank you, Dick.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
So this is, this should be filed under our property.
To take a look at, now, in my opinion, uh, the gentleman's, uh, looking for fields.
Soccer, you mean?
Soccer.
Yeah.
I, I'd take a hard look. Uh, one thing that Kurt had brought up. I, I hope I, um, say it correctly. If you had ten or more acres. That you wanted to be deforested, but the problem is it would have to go into farmland. Cut the trees down, sow the trees. And there's a, uh, an outfit that has paper waste. That will come in, stump it, grind it up, put the paper waste down. And turn it into agricultural fields.
Even swap?
For, yeah, for putting the paper waste down, that's, that's what it was. Um. I'm trying to think of his name. I, I, you know, another one of these. Pardon?
Talby. Is the guy you're talking about.
Talby, yes, Jim, Jim Talby. Westbrook Field.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways, that's what it was told to me that, that, that they'll do that. Because it's, uh, six to ten thousand dollars to have it stumped and ground. It's a, it's a lot of money per acre, that's a, per acre or something like that.
I like that idea. And you were talking about, uh, behind Glenwood?
Well, there's not enough land behind Glenwood. It goes into the, into the wetlands. So, um, there is enough room in there, like I say, you could go in there, at least three hundred feet in. And I would say offhand maybe six, seven hundred feet long. So. But, uh, that's about all you could get.
Hmm. All right.
So anyways, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Dick. Is that it? Yeah, okay, Gary. No, oh, Nick.
I didn't make the agenda, so I figured I'd do it during public comment.
Thank you.
Nick Monaco, police chief, just, uh, wanted to give a back-to-school operations update. Tomorrow's the first day of school for the, uh, Wachusett School District. And, uh, just some of the stuff we're doing, we're gonna announce tonight on social media, just some reminders on traffic safety about the school zones. I've talked to Gary. We're gonna put a little message on the light-up board in the center of town, just reminding people it's the first day of school. Um, tomorrow, we're gonna have some extra staff on so we can do some high-visibility, uh, patrolling in the school zones, do some speed enforcement. Uh, we'll have somebody out to help cross the kids at the crosswalk. Uh, we're gonna have people at the schools do a little foot patrol as the kids are getting off the buses, just to greet the kids and everything. Uh, we'll also be following buses before and after school. Make sure we get some visibility on the bus routes. Uh, also, tonight or tomorrow morning, we're gonna put up some, uh. High-visibility cones in the crosswalks just to remind the morning and afternoon commuters where the crosswalks are. And it was nice to hear Paul say that, uh, people are actually stopping these days.
Yep.
Um, Officer Grover, just last week, completed the, the full week, uh, school resource officer school. And, uh, she's gonna be making a major presence at all the schools again, starting this week. And we'll also be helping up a little bit up at the high school one day a week, uh, 'cause right now they're currently without a school resource officer. Um, Wachusett School District has just transitioned or is in the process of transitioning to the Alice Lockdown Program. Uh, let's see. It's a violent intruder training system and we actually just sent two officers to it, to the instructor's school. And, uh, the fire department sent somebody as well. And we're gonna send another one in October. So that's actually something we can bring back to the town as well. We can, you know, our instructors can teach it at the library, town hall, um, any other, any other building in town. It's not exclusive to schools. What else do we got? Oh, and I'm actually, um, I'm pricing out some pedestrian safety signs, the reboundable crosswalk signs that we can put down in Main Street. I've talked to Gary about it and, uh, he's agreed to install them if we can get them. Just trying to find some funding for it right now. And just for the future, for, um, special town meeting, we're gonna possibly have some, uh, some of the light-up crosswalk signs, some estimates to put on there as well.
Great.
So that's what we got going on for the back-to-school. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Now, can Gary go? Yeah? All right.
Okay, I just got a couple of things. No big deal. Um, you all have received copies of the winter operations plan. Um, other towns are actually requesting, um, ours as they have done in the past, so I did send that all off to you for your review and approval. Don't know if you reviewed them yet, but, um, we'd like to get that taken care of.
So do you need a motion for us to accept it?
Yeah, you gotta approve it. Yeah, you do. It's, it's, you do it yearly, Skip.
Yeah, the board already has a copy, I believe, in the back of your agenda binders, but this would be, this has some very simple.
Minor changes.
Non-substantive updates, right?
So you've got this.
Make a motion to accept the winter operations. Plan that has come forth from the DPW.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
unanimous, great.
Quick.
Thank you. Um, I do have, I have done several interviews over the last couple of weeks, so I interviewed three people for the budgeted custodial position. Um, and they all did very well, but I am here to ask the, um, the board, I guess, Margaret, I'm, I'm sorry, I just don't know if this just has to go through you with the, um, the, the PDA and all that. Stuff for approval, um, but we have found.
The PAF? Yes, the appointment still goes through the town administrator, so is this where we?
So I need not bring any of that to the board?
You can let the board know that, um, you're recommending the appointment of the positions.
Okay, I am recommending, uh, Jamie Bovee for the position of custodian. Very, um, very good, um, interview process and she has experience with doing that business in the, in the past on her own, so. Um, they all did very well, like I say, but, um, um, my, my feeling is that we should, uh, offer the position to Jamie. Jamie Bovee, B-O-V-E. Rutland resident.
Well, no, I, I just didn't hear what you said, Gary.
I'm sorry.
Definitely can't hear out.
I'm sorry, Spencer, she lives in Spencer, so, yeah, but she did come down and, and had a good interview. Okay?
Great.
And the other person, unfortunately, today turned down the job. So I have no candidates that are fully qualified for the position of equipment operator laborer. But we do have many candidates that do have one or the other as far as licenses go. And the union has agreed, if it's okay with the board, to bring these people in with, uh, part of their six-month probation. Would be to obtain the other license needed. If not, we'd have to let he or she go.
You're okay with that?
Um, we've been searching for people for a long time.
So we pay in or they pay in?
We, we pay to train. They pay for their first license because it's a requirement to have it, but the renewals are then paid for by the town.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at. The first license that they don't have.
We'll train them, but they have to go out and get their own license.
And they're paying for it.
The first license, yes, first issue.
So I, there's gotta be a way to memorialize this since it's not really in strict compliance with the, the CBA. So there should be some sort of, um, of, I wanna say a side letter agreement, but some sort of memorandum of, of agreement. That the person's gonna obtain their, their license, the town's gonna pay for it. With the police, they actually commit.
We're not paying for it.
We're not paying.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're not.
No, we're not.
Oh, I'm sorry, say it again.
So how is it working again? But, but wait a minute, I, let's be clear. You keep saying they pay for their own license, the actual license, but what does it take to train them?
Most of them have the experience, just don't have the license. So what it takes to train them for them to go out, get their learner, learner's permit.
Yeah.
so we can give them time behind the wheel. If they already have their CDL, the easy part of it is the hoisting license because it's fairly logic, and it's all book study and take a test.
So we're paying them to practice, to be able to go get their license?
We're paying, yes, they will be working.
See, that's, that's why you keep saying we're training them. They're going to pay for the actual license.
I'm talking about paying for the license because in the past, years ago, we used to hire somebody who knew nothing about nothing. They would go, we would put them through school, we would pay them to drive the truck, we'd pay them to get their license. Tell me if I'm wrong or right.
No, but you're right, Skip, and I'm leaving now.
Yeah, I know.
You hired me knowing nothing about nothing, but I'm leaving now.
Okay, okay, but, okay, okay, but. And I feel like we've talked about this a lot, and I want to know why the first person ended up leaving. But besides that, when we look at police, because we've done both ways with police, too, we now have a process in place where when, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, if the right candidate comes forward and we pay for that candidate to go to the academy, there is then an understanding with that candidate that that person stays for X amount of time. I would think.
Well, look, yes, yes, yes. And if they leave within that period of time, they reimburse the training costs.
Right?
Yeah.
Right. So I guess, to Gary, what you were saying, and you know Margaret just said an MOU with the candidate, is there an MOU yet with the union? Because I think we need that.
The union has agreed to it. They're coming up for negotiations now for the next contract, but we can certainly get one together because they agree with the process. They know that we need the help there.
So, okay.
And it will be at a lesser rate of pay as higher than what.
That's all. We just don't want, yeah.
But so for the next meeting, don't you think there should be an MOU with the union? That's a big contract change. That's impact bargaining.
Well, you'd have to do, you'd have to do a memorandum.
You're making an issue out of nothing because they're content with what we're doing.
No, they've agreed to what he wants to do, but he hasn't done it yet. That's a big difference.
They have to agree to it in writing. Okay, you got it.
Can we, will it be that fast and easy?
It'll be done.
Great. So let's put that under Gary for next meeting, and to Margaret's suggestion of an MOU with, I assume you have candidate or candidates in mind that were good.
I've got at least 20. They either have one or the other, but not both.
You acknowledge it's going to be the important thing because you don't want to establish precedent.
Right. I guess I'm just, I mean, Skip, I hear what you're saying, but wouldn't you rather train the right person than lose them because they're missing one thing?
He's going to train them, but they're paying for their license.
How much is the actual license, Gary?
Hundred and fifty bucks, something like that.
Yeah.
How much is it, how much is it going to cost to train some of these people?
They're going to be working. It's not like when you send somebody to the police academy, they're gone. They're at the police academy. When you put somebody with a learner's permit and a piece of equipment, they're working every day. They're not just going out and driving around town all day.
Okay.
So it'll be taken care of. I'll take care of it.
Is everybody all right with this direction? Okay, great. Wait, why did the first person leave? Do we know where they went?
Excuse me?
Do we know why the first person declined?
They just, he told his present employer what he was doing, and they offered him more money. So he said for now. And it's too bad because he did a good job and he had all the licenses, so it's too bad.
Okay.
Okay, and that's all, that's all I got. If you have nothing else for me on here, I don't think you do.
Use the town to get more money from his current job.
Excuse me?
About the sign request, it doesn't, it's not under you, but we've got a sign through the chair.
Are those the ones that went back to you, Nick?
They're all set. They're all signed off.
Yeah, Gary signed off first, actually.
Okay, okay.
Does anybody have anything for Gary? I mean, there's a few other things, Gary, later on that are, that certainly, do you need to go? We'll take them out of order if you were planning to take off.
I am here to.
He was, okay.
All right, well, do you want to, okay, if you want to take them out of order, they won't take me long.
Okay. We'll do the first one under correspondence. Gary, it was really just more of a notification, and did we send Gary? He's CC'd on it, right? The letter, the DCR letter. Where's my letter? That came in, oh, that's right, sorry. Okay, so I think, yeah, in your correspondence folder, we have a letter from John Scannell just inquiring about our payment and our lack thereof. And we just, we drafted a quick letter that is attached. It is dated for, it's actually dated today with a response to Director Scannell. Gary, I think you've explained this to us before. Probably a refresher would be good, why we did not pay our full fourth-quarter bill to the City of Worcester Sewer System.
Okay, and I'll try to do that again. I hope that letter hasn't gone out.
Uh, no, it's here to be approved.
What the problem is between City of Worcester and DCR is their budget cycle is different from ours. So alls we have to go on, and Margaret and I go over this every year, is projections and what they tell me on the street what the budget increase would be. That is what we base our budget request for. And now, two years in a row, it's come in much higher. So we have, we have to bite the bullet. I paid them what we had.
Yep.
Margaret and I have talked and met several times regarding what monies are available to transfer, such as the Forest Hill Christmas Tree Lane Sewer Line, such as the monies that are left over, or the low bid came in for the INI rehabilitation work.
The combination of all of those, you will be able to approve.
We will be able to pay, but it's just a matter of going to town meeting.
Yep.
And they know that, and that's why when I got the letter from Ms. Davidson, the first time I didn't respond because they know that, and it's just.
And, yeah, and we go way back with Paula, and then the second letter came from John, and so here we are. I think, I'm not sure why they were questioning just the lack of letter, but so here's the letter for the board. It's very straightforward. Thank you for reaching out. Town apologizes. We have a placeholder set for fall town meeting, to Margaret's point. She already had that ready with what you just indicated, which is pulling from a lot of those old, a lot of those old line items for the full remainder for FY18, which is about $42,000, and that we will try to mitigate the issue for future budget cycles.
And again, Sheila, and a lot has to come into play with the water sewer rate study that is being started now.
Yeah.
Because this happens every year, and this stuff has to be taken into consideration. And to have to go back to the users and all of a sudden every year say, whoa, all of a sudden your bill's going to be this because we don't have an effective water sewer rate. So that's why we're doing that. We have tried to refrain from increasing rates for a long time because everything else is getting increased, but this year, anyway. It's not that, what is it, 29, 29,000 or something? Anyway, 42,000, I think. So it bit us in the butt. So that's all there is to it, but we have the money once we get the transfers.
So.
So you think we should send the letters, or you say?
Well, the letter was addressed to us as the commissioners. The response is pretty tepid.
I think the letter should go to acknowledge that this is going to be taken care of special in the fall.
I agree.
I'd like to make a motion that the chair signed this letter that to DCR, Director Scannell, for the reasons for non-payment and the way.
Second.
Great. Is there any more questions?
No, no.
Sure?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Gary, do you hear, I think the only thing that changed off of this copy is the CC's on it. Do you want this right away? I think you're, careful, I think you're CC'd too.
Does she want to reply? Oh, is that what you gave her?
Yeah, I gave him, yeah. All right, there was something else with Gary. Oh, so, okay, the other thing we're going to skip, and then we'll come back around to Margaret, new business, is Charnak Road. Why don't you give us an update? So two, four weeks ago, we sent the letter. In that interim of two weeks, there were conversations back and forth. The builder was very aggressive in contacting you directly. You came to us two weeks ago to ask us to sort of reiterate our support for what you wanted, which was the full paving. And we left the meeting with a vote to send a letter from the board, correct? That was where we left two weeks ago. But since then, I know you've been in contact a lot with council over this. So, okay, so now two more weeks have passed, and now we're here, so you can get us caught up.
Okay, I'll bring you back a couple of weeks. The letter was composed. I did send it out and really never got a response from anyone that the board of selectmen was ready to sign that. It was after meeting, understand that it wasn't in the cycle. So in conversations with Margaret and Greg Corbell from KP, he put together a cease and desist order, which I think you are all aware of. In the meantime, I met there with an engineering firm, that being Quinn. I met there with the contractor, the paving company, and Mr. Blair. That was beginning of last week, give or take. But I did talk to Greg Corbell, legal, and was very concerned about the language as close to original as possible. And I know we all are because it's very vague to me, and I expressed that concern with Attorney Corbell. And he agreed. If we, if they did the work that they, the way they wanted it to do it, it could very well be construed as too, as close to original as possible. So after expressing my concerns and telling him what was going on and what, and about the meeting that was about to take place, I told him I'd get back to him. At any rate, I did meet with all the, all the people I'm telling you about on the site. Granted, that deadline was last Friday. I get it. The work has started. I was there today. The sides of the road will be dug and regravelled and compacted. Then it will be a leveling course with tack, and then it will be a top coat from edge to edge, 22 feet long. Engineering agrees that that's the way to go. So, and that's why I wanted them to come with me because I wanted that backing from somebody besides myself because I want it done right. So out of that, and I know that, again, if they're a couple of days late, they're also going to do the additional 200 feet, as some of you are probably aware, from Woodside to where we ended the pave for the rail trail on Charnak, at no cost of the town. So I felt, and I still feel, that to forgive that because it's going to be, oh, by the way, if I didn't tell you to be paved this Thursday. So schedules are rearranged, and they're coming in to pave it Thursday. It'll be inspected daily by the DPW to make sure it's done right. I have every confidence and all the faith that it will be because I'm dealing direct with those who are building it, not others. So I, my recommendation to the board is, Thursday it is, let's get it paved, and let's get it done. I have approved that with them. Also, again, please understand, with the recommendation and approval, legal and engineering. And that's where we are.
And you will sign off in the end, right?
Yes.
What's the estimated completion date now?
That's a very quick process to put a leveling course. It shouldn't be, if the weather's with it, it shouldn't be more than two days.
It'll be done this week.
Yeah, because they're working on the ditch line and the 22, to get the true 22-foot width now.
Charnak Road will be repaved this week.
From Main to 200 feet north of Woodside.
And that's the full width of the road.
22 feet, what it was. It's not just a patch job. It's not just a saw cut and a patch job.
How is it, so it's different from what Blair originally said he would be willing to do? How is it different from what you said you wanted at the last meeting?
When I do a road over in Townshila, that's the way I do it. I reclaim, I grade, I compact, I pave.
So we're not reclaiming.
That's the way I do it. We're not reclaiming, we're leveling and resurfacing with tack after the repairs are done for the ditch line. There are pictures of the before, before it was touched. I get it. I get it. I've seen them. I've seen the rest of the road.
So what do you mean, there are pictures?
There's pictures before they started construction.
Saying it wasn't that great before.
No, no, so that's why I say that too, as close to original as possible, to me is very vague.
Well, okay, but I guess, again, I think we talked about this last time, as close to original was taken by one side of this issue as doesn't need to be as good. And we were taking it as needs to be as good or better.
Yes, and you stated that at the last meeting. Yes, you did.
So what are we getting?
We're getting better.
We're getting better?
Yeah.
You think we're getting, Skip thinks we're getting better. How is a leveling course going to work with the new pavement that needs to go along the sides?
The new pavement will go edge to edge. The leveling course brings the rest of the road up to the snuff with, up to snuff with tack.
Okay.
Follow me? You know what a leveling course?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Okay.
Can I, can I just ask a question through the chair? The road construction policy procedures, whatever it is that states, the regulations that states must be as close to original as possible, can that language be changed at the board's next meeting?
Yeah, I thought about that.
After this is done, so there is no, you know, can that be changed to be, to be, must be restored to original or better condition?
Or better, yeah, I don't see why it can't be, honestly.
There should not be any interpretation.
I don't see why it can't be changed.
Next agenda.
Do we have police details?
Yeah.
Not yet.
Not yet, so they didn't, they didn't call for police details, so.
Are they going to?
That's, they should, and that's up to the police chief.
They generally do when they've been working over there.
Any issues with the school buses?
They won't need it for the shoulder work because they'll be off the road.
Oh, okay.
But for the pave.
Do you think the buses will be able to get back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they're not going to do, yeah, yeah, they won't.
Do you want a detail, chief?
I'll, if Gary says they're in the shoulder and there's enough room for the bus to get by, we're probably okay. Well, what days are they doing this?
They'll be starting the work on the ditches tomorrow. It's all marked today. I checked it.
Okay.
The pave, weather permitting, will start Thursday.
Okay. I'll take a swing by tomorrow.
It's really narrow. I mean, is there any reason they would object to paying for, and I assume we're all talking about them paying for the detail?
Not a question of objection, if the chief wants them to put details out there, there's not a question of objection. They'll put details out there.
School starts tomorrow, and I think the whole idea was that we were going, this was to be done before school started.
Yeah.
I think, at the least, you need a detail at no expense of the town for all days. Or flagman, yeah, no.
Okay. So.
I mean, school starts tomorrow. It's a different story.
Yep.
You know, you've got equipment, you've got to park the equipment, windy road.
You've got people walking around. I mean, is that going to be, is that going to be yet another issue that we think there should be a paid detail there? Paid, paid, not by us, detail, is that fair? Is that a fair question?
I will assess it tomorrow.
Okay.
I, if it's how Gary's describing it, I think we'll be okay without the detail.
Okay.
They've been very good about calling when they do need one.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have any questions? And you expect to be able to go out once a day?
Oh, yeah, more than that.
More than that, but it'll be you.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, I want to keep an eye on this.
What was the reason for missing the deadline?
The reason is just, I guess, because of what I reported to the board the last meeting. I think we've made great strides in getting them to do a lot more than what they proposed to do. So it just took also to, all of a sudden, be able to get a paver to come in here and do that in this time of the year, this construction season. So that's not an easy job, and I understand all you guys know what you want done, but not in a bad way, with no disrespect. You might not know how to get it done, and that's my job. And I have to go make the arrangements and do what I do, and it's a constant visit to the site. It's constant negotiations, bickering, and so we just do the best we can. And I think we did pretty good on this one.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions? I know I had sent you a list, and you mostly answered them. Anybody else? We good?
Superintendent's good, I'm good.
Thank you, Gary, for all the work on it. I know.
Thank you.
It's been a lot of back and forth on your shoulders.
A lot of sweat on this one. This was a tough one, so.
Good leadership.
Well, thank you, sir.
All right. Next. Signs. What, is that still for Gary? Gary signed off on the signs?
Well, the, yeah, Gary, police chief and fire chief, all signed off. The first sign is a request for a speed limit, 30. The recommendation by the public, by the police chief and Gary was 30 miles an hour, and that's along Kenwood, heading toward Main Street. The next request is for another speed limit sign, 30 miles an hour on the Main Street end of Kenwood. And then the last one is a speed limit sign, 30 miles an hour at each end of Paddock Road. And I think I passed down the originals, okay.
Yep.
So it's all signed off on, everyone?
All three, all three of you have signed off.
Okay, I'll just need, yeah, my copies, maybe I'll get my copies for you, Abby, so I get the comments.
So I think we actually need the, we need the board of selectmen to make this motion, so we can all.
Motion to approve all three recommendations for street signs on Kenwood and two on Paddock?
Yep, two on Kenwood and two on Paddock. Do I, hold on one second. I'm sorry. I apologize. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstain. Yes.
Just a quick question about speed limits. When you, especially when you're redoing a speed limit, this might be for you, do you put extra patrols on? I mean, how does that happen? I live on Pleasantville, said enough. What happens to the?
I don't think that we've changed any since I've been police chief or even since I've worked here, but we'll help announce it so people know about it, and we will do extra patrols out there so people are educated on it.
Second, second question along the same thing. I don't know those roads well enough, but trucks particularly go way faster than cars, which is way more dangerous. I've never yet in town seen a truck stopped, at least on Pleasantville. Is there, how do, can you explain to us how that works? Is it just like a car?
Trucks would get stopped just like a car would.
So it would be just the same?
Yeah.
Ideally?
Yeah, I've stopped trucks.
Good, stop more.
People would stop trucks. But we don't have prejudice against trucks.
That's profiling, Carol.
Thank you. I think we should profile.
So, I, to Carol's point, and Nick and I have had this conversation, I'll never stand in the way of people asking for these signs, they want them. I personally don't feel, in particular, some of the ones that are asked for tonight, that signage is our answer. And I don't know what our answer is, but this community has somehow gotten it into its collective head that speeding is okay in Rutland. And that's what they do, because the signs that we are putting up tonight are pretty much only for the people that live on these roads. They're not cut-through roads, they're really not very public roads, very few are using them other than the people who live there. So this is neighbor saying to another neighbor, you're driving too fast. I'm just, I don't know, I'm looking...
Except that the police will be enforcing, they'll be out, so that will send a message.
I mean, I hope so, but we only have so many police, and we have a hundred miles of roads. So Nick, I, I appreciate, you know, everything you're talking about as far as the crosswalks. If we can make this a more pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, I mean, I think, you know, in the news, the past three weeks, we've had three children killed on bicycles in this state alone. And a couple of them were maybe just different circumstances, but I, I just, I feel like we need a, a bigger picture than just putting up a few signs.
Oh, signage is not the answer. It's just step one in the series of events.
Yeah, so thank you.
And if I may, just briefly on, on your issue about trucks tonight, I agree with you, um, and through Rutland Police, and also you're very fortunate to have a truck team member that lives in town. So you may not see them parked on the side of the road, because more times than not, they pull them right into our yard. And they kind of impound them there until they're, you know, they get their ticket for speeding, but then, once they get that, as the chief will say, they go right through the whole truck, logs, springs, tires, the whole bit, so.
Yeah, they often direct them to a, uh, larger area where they can pack off the road than do their entire inspection.
Can I ask just one quick other question? Do you ever deputize people who live on AstroTidings? How would I do that?
No, no, no.
Did they get that on Carol?
Citizen's arrest, Carol.
No, we, we won't, we won't, we won't do that. However, um, if you see any particular vehicles, particular descriptions, or license plates, please feel free to call us and we will follow up on it.
Okay.
That's because I'm sure a lot of them are repeat offenders.
We can do a ride-along, though. I mean, right? You still offer ride-alongs, chief?
We don't do that anymore.
No, I just...
Skip's, no.
We don't do that anymore.
No?
That, that used to happen, yeah.
There are a couple.
Insurance issues.
The liability is too high.
That's right.
That's right, it is.
Maybe we can set up something special for Carol?
For my road?
Well, there's, there's, uh...
Along those same lines, since Nick's here, can I ask a question for public knowledge more? For people that are running through school bus stop signs and everything, if the bus driver or parents can grab model, make, and license plate, does that, is that helpful or hurtful? I mean...
It is helpful. We, we can issue a citation based off of witness information.
Okay, really?
As long as we have credible and complete information.
Oh, my goodness. I thought I'd heard that from a bus driver, but I wasn't sure, so that was more for public information. Thank you.
Thank you.
School buses have, uh, dashboard cameras yet?
I don't think they do around here, no. They have interior cameras, and I don't think anybody has an exterior camera yet.
Anything else for Gary? We good? We're good.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Gary.
And I would also, I, I would like to, uh, to, to welcome Mr. Reed, because I know we're gonna look...
I'm gonna do that under my updates. Thank you very much, you're all set.
I know you will, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say goodnight for him.
You're all set, thank you, thank you.
Stop trying to steal a thunder.
What's that?
You want him for this?
Uh...
Who's gonna do the digging?
Gary. No, okay. Gary, 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 I'm sorry. I thought we were going back in order and we're having Margaret, but no, we're gonna take one more thing.
Oh.
Uh, Ice Storm. Well, we did street signs, I guess we're going completely out of order. Playgrounds, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, Gary. We, we were, what's that?
Playgrounds and Ice Storm.
Playgrounds and, yeah, we're, okay, uh, under new business, yeah.
Make yourself comfortable.
Basically, from now on, we're gonna put a note on the agenda that says we might move around a little bit. Um, under new business, you have your second item, which is the Ice Storm 10th Anniversary. Gary and I actually have been talking about this quite a while, um, off and on. And I have a proposal for the board to take a look at, which basically is, look, it's the 10th year, in case anybody forgot, of the anniversary of the Ice Storm. It was December 11th, 2008, and I was thinking it would be a nice community goal to try to have ten trees planted by the 10th Anniversary. We wouldn't have wanted to have planted them in this summer weather anyway. The goal would be, to Skip's point, uh, to have trees donated and the labor donated.
To my point?
Because you said, you, we need Gary here to dig the holes. The hope would be we don't need Gary to help us dig holes.
My point is, why do we even want to remember this? This is tragedy.
I know.
This is silly.
But we lost a lot of, but we lost a lot of trees, so we're planting...
I lost a lot of animals, too, in there, too, but nobody's gonna replace them, so we lost a tree, whoopee.
Well, we can try that.
Lost a lot of trees.
You're not getting a lot of support here.
No.
Mother Nature pruned her forest, is what she did.
Okay.
She didn't need to prune my animals.
So, this might go nowhere. Uh, but the information is pretty straightforward. Any donor, it could be an individual, it could be a group, it could be in memory of someone, it could be a local nonprofit. They would provide information about the tree, so that the tree warden, who is Gary, could approve it, um, the location. You have the list of all the tree information that people would have to give, uh, the date of anticipated planning, planting, any special requests needed. Uh, we, I, on the back of it, I have some specific instructions based on some Arbor Day information about the tree itself, because we've obviously had issues. The planning board knows well with inappropriate trees for certain locations, which they have roots that are too shallow, and they break sidewalks, and we just don't want to go down that road.
Where do you want to put them?
Well, that's the point. So I think when Gary and I originally talked about it, he might have chosen some locations. He still could. This is just a draft. Or, um, we've already had, well, just because I was the one that was kind of thinking about this, uh, there's a few trees that are going to get planted by, um, a PTO group down at the Glenwood School for shade trees down at the playground. So that could be a part of this, but he would, as a tree warden, have the last word on location, because we obviously don't want them anywhere that's going to interfere with God knows what.
Would you anticipate having a plaque or something like the Central Tree Tree, that it's like a, a 10th Anniversary Ice Storm?
Right, so the back actually indicates that a small plaque, and I totally made up the size of twelve by eight. Dick, if you think it should be, you know, twelve by eight weather resistant, I thought that was about right, for a plaque at the base of the tree. Yeah, uh, it's really just meant to be a nice community project.
How long do you think that plaque's gonna be there under that tree?
Well, I don't know. I, I mean, I think it depends on the plaque. And I, and we could put a lot more restrictions on it if you want. You could say that it has to be a certain material, you could say it has to be this, we could do...
That's not what I meant, Sheila.
Oh.
You, you're concerned people are just gonna come stale?
They're just gonna come up and take this plaque thing and walk away with it. Let's be real.
Have, have Bay Path put it in concrete?
Yeah, we could do that. Shame, I suppose they could dig out the tree.
Right on top of the tree roots.
Well, they could.
For Addison, it's got a nice rock right over there, right beside the, right, so.
Well, that's right. We, I mean, we've done it before. This isn't, we're not breaking new ground here, no pun intended. We have planted trees before, um, in the past, the first couple of years after the Ice Storm, a few, several trees were planted.
Thirty-three.
How much?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three trees. Uh, most of them are doing really well. I think maybe one.
We lost, we, we lost a low percentage.
Yeah.
We did lose a lot of trees.
So this was really just a commemoration of the 10 years, try to get back on that, on that road.
Is there a place in town that, that needs trees? I mean...
We're looking for open fields for the farmer.
But I mean, it's, aside Skip's farm, but I mean, there are peo...
I'll be, if you plant on my farm, I'll be the first one to cut it down. I'll be right off it, right up front with you.
But I mean, there are, there, like you say, there are people who would like to memorialize a, a loved one, and if, if it was something, instead of, oh, there's a tree, whatever. But if you had a place where ten trees were, and this is your mom's tree, then I, I like trees, it's fine.
I'm happy to take suggestions. Obviously, we have Maple Avenue. All of those maples are dying. They're reaching the end of their natural lives. You know, if somebody says, I'd like to plant a tree on Maple Avenue, we need to get Gary to okay it and, and see if it's the right maple.
So they, they come with their own tree?
They come with their own tree, they do their own work.
Plant it.
How many trees are out there beside the road, uh, through the chair to Gary, you know, that need to come down? And maybe that's where their new tree ought to be planted.
Honestly, there's still hundreds, Dick, there's hundreds.
That's a good idea.
Take a look, take a right up Muscat Park.
I know, that's, that's why I brought it up, because, uh, to me, that is, uh, something...
Probably years ago, Maple probably had an umbrella.
I, I think it probably did, yeah.
It doesn't anymore.
No.
Hundreds, there's hundreds in town.
Yeah, and if we have another ice dog, that's why I have a generator now.
Well, uh, you know, this was meant to be, um, obviously, it's listed as a, uh, one that I listed as a public announcement. It's just a draft press release. Anything can be changed on it. We could put it off for another couple of weeks, if you want to think about some of the details. The note here is that we would want to plant that minimum of ten by the 10th Anniversary date of 12/11. We have a meeting the night before, so we could recognize anyone that has done that donation, done that work. It's absolutely the right time to be planting trees. December is getting a little late with the ground freezing.
Yeah, I wouldn't put them in any later than the end of October, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, the window's not huge. November, maybe, I guess it depends on, you know, climate, so, um, that's it. That's, it's there.
We can start digging holes on December 4th.
We could, we could.
The day after, December 5th.
Right. Because we have a countdown going. Uh, if there is any...
On three.
Town department, we're at the hundred, um, they have a little crown somewhere for a hundred days for kids. We can get you one of those. If anybody from the town departments has a, an interest in being part of this, and you think you, you have a tree that you want, I think, public safety buildings, trees actually look really good. You guys have, so anyway. Okay, how's the board feel about this? Can we move ahead with this?
I like trees.
Nice. Like it as a general, is there anything significant that should be changed from the proposal? It's pretty straightforward. And you might not get ten trees, and that's okay.
Who's buying this? You? I mean, this is your drafting and...
This is my draft. You can change anything you like.
I would just offer support.
Maybe it's on here. I was just gonna say, if people are interested in buying a tree but don't necessarily have a location, do we have brainstorms of like, oh, that playground really needs more shade, or...
Yes, it's on the back. Questions about tree variety, location, or details may be addressed to the board, and anybody, whoever needs to answer it will answer it, whether it's the warden or...
I think it would be great if you could plant a playground tree in memory of somebody, and I think you'll, you'll sell them quick.
I, no, we can try it. All right. I'm afraid to ask. Can I have a motion for something?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the, um, Town of Rutland's 10th Anniversary's, um, memorialization of the Ice Storm and the tree planting, um, opportunity.
Thank you.
I'll second that, but I, you know, it's fine with me.
Thanks, Skip.
Not on my property.
Do you have an amendment that if they want to buy you a couple of animals, you'll take those, too?
I know.
That's five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars, so, I mean, yeah, that'd be fine.
Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all abstain, since it was, thank you. Uh, here, here's a copy of that, too, because I think...
Just give me one? Oh, I got one.
Oh, I, I...
You did? Okay, great.
Oh, I just got it. Also.
Okay, uh, I think, no, we're not quite done with Gary. Playgrounds. So we have two things going on with playgrounds that are still kind of up in the air. I, I think everyone saw this email, maybe not. Um, we have unfortunately had a few social media posts about the condition of playground, and they're reporting that it could be dangerous.
At Memorial.
At Memorial Field, yes. Some of the things are easy fixes or easy removals, but Gary, the, the fence, I think, I think we need to talk tonight mostly.
I got prices on fencing, Sheila? Again, denied. I got prices, I had a person come out that was ready to do that immediately, right from in town, precision fence.
Yeah.
To do the whole thing, and it was an excellent price, and I still have the numbers.
But...
Not with me, but I still have the numbers.
We don't have the money.
We don't have the money, but I don't know if, if it's a responsibility of rec, or is it a responsibility of town?
It is absolutely a responsibility of the town. Recreation has no...
I don't, yeah, I don't, uh...
I don't agree with that.
I certainly don't have the money.
They run the playground.
Skip, this is not...
It's a facility, though.
It's a facility. They have never, ever been in charge of that playground. That could be wrong. It's why I keep asking about Parks and Rec. But for now, that, that playground has always been our responsibility.
Yeah, and it's, um, and you're right, because I saw that sentence that you put in your email, and yeah, you're right. People, teenagers get in there and just rip those, those cyclones apart.
So, I think with precision fence, is that something you were thinking you'd put on Fall Town meeting and see if we can get money for it, or...
Yeah, but I think when, I think we were dealing with rec, I think, um, rec was gonna put some money up towards that, too, I believe, at the time, so I'll, I'll, I'll touch bases with her.
They've just, they'd put major money into the pool this year, and I just, I don't, I don't know that that revolving fund would be healthy enough to, to pay for it.
What's the ballpark number for the fence for the playground?
It wasn't much, Leah, I just, I don't remember, because I still have the prices, but I, I just don't remember what it was.
No worries. I just wasn't sure if...
Yeah, it wasn't big money. It wasn't millions of dollars.
It was under the CIPC threshold?
Yes.
It was a few thousand. Yes, hopefully. So, okay, can...
Nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Let's, let's hope it wasn't. Can we do this, then? Can, can there be a plan that will, can we bookmark that for Fall Town meeting? Let's see where we end up. Can you provide us that price for Fall Town meeting?
Sure, I still have them, sure.
Because I assume it's, it's nowhere else, right? It's not like we budgeted it in your budget, your regular...
No, it's not my budget, no.
No, exactly.
No, 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 no.
We can reach out to rec and see where they stand, but I don't know. And then, in the, but in the meantime, we have a dangerous fence, and I'm just wondering, uh, do we have the staff to take it down?
It should be fixed, and part of the installation of the new fence included the bottom rail, which this fence doesn't have. So a lot of the kids will, older kids will crawl under, lift it up, pull out the...
That's the problem.
Right.
So, then that's what was important, and we needed that bottom rail.
It's a big problem.
So can we take this fence down?
No, you can't take it down. It still serves a purpose, unfortunately, yeah, people can get, but you got little kids running out that fence down to that street.
Right.
That's what, fifteen, twenty feet from the road.
So let me ask you this. Can you take down all the fence other than that side? Because that side's actually not that bad. I mean, that, it's not great, but it...
Honestly, uh, I mean, if the, that, what the board's telling me to do, I'll do that, but I can't take fence down.
Yeah.
That's, that's protective, and that's what it's there for.
Yeah, can you put up construction fence temporarily in its place? So it's a, because construction fence is not going to be dangerous, and it'll contain the area, and...
Gary...
Can you do, could that be done instead?
Gary, look...
Can it be done? Sure. Does it, does it serve a purpose? No, because they're held up with wire ties.
Gary, the, this fence doesn't serve a purpose now. I, I should have printed it out. I can show it to you or send it to you a screenshot. There was a social media post that said, you know, I have little kids, and I like having the fence there, but they see a hole and they go through it, and I'm pretty sure they're gonna get hurt. Now, we could have all kinds of discussions about that, but that's what's happening. Well, that's what's happening, and that, we're gonna end up getting a call, somebody's got hurt, somebody got tetanus, I don't know, it's gonna be, we can't leave it. We can't. I think at this point, we're taking risks. What's that?
Maybe, let me see, maybe I'll hit up the Pike for some more cyclone.
What?
Through the chair.
Yeah.
If this is a really dangerous issue, is there any way we can put warning tape saying not, no entrance, you can't go in?
That's...
Until such a time as it gets fixed, because, I mean, leaving it the way it is is, uh, obviously a liability to the town, so you got a choice. You know, you pick up a board, put up some tape, say you can't enter.
I mean, until we fix it, I think you're right. I think right now, we've been alerted that we have a dangerous situation, and if we don't do anything every hour that we don't, we are liable. That's where, pretty much where we are now.
So just close the thing down, wipe it off.
I mean, it's...
We're gonna get calls over that, and you will, too.
Oh, yeah.
And the, the older kids will not pay any regard to caution, or do not enter tape, construction tape.
Gary, back, Gary, back to the fencing, that is not under the playground requirements. We're not by law required to have a fence. I mean, I like having a fence. It was nice when it was in one piece, but it's not, it's not one of the playground requirements, right? It's all about the...
If, if somebody can, can confirm that, and give me some information, and you don't have to have, have a fence there, I'll take it down. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I...
Contact Maya, yeah. You don't need to have a fence.
I don't know.
You don't need to have a fence. Okay, let's con...
We're gonna confirm with Maya.
Let's confirm with Maya. Can we, just, do you want a board vote on this?
Okay, all right.
Yes, you do.
I'll make a motion if my, if our insurance company, Maya says to remove, that we do not need a fence, we'll have Gary remove it.
Okay.
ASAP?
ASAP.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the easy part.
All of it.
Yeah.
Post included.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more comments?
I have a question. All, the whole entire fence, or leave the side along the street? I don't, I don't care, but I, for clarification.
I think the side on the street is actually the worst.
Is it?
Oh, is it?
I thought it was, I thought it was a pool side.
Can you use the other sections to fix that section?
I don't want, I, no, it's fine. I just, I just want to...
I had to ask the question. Could it remove it all?
I, I think if you have a, uh, a chain link fence that kids can go underneath, that's an emergent problem right there, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not just underneath, it's through, it's over, the whole fence is just...
I mean, that's like a, almost like a guillotine, you know?
Well, that was a strong word, okay.
Strong word, strong word, but it's, it's a problem.
It was only, honestly, it was less than a thousand dollars to buy the fence, the roll of fence that would take to, to go around that whole perimeter of that playground, but we don't have the tools for installation. We don't have the stretchers, we just don't have that stuff.
If the precision fence number was viable, and, I mean, you know.
And they gave me a good price.
Looking for an Eagle Scout, because some of Alex's Eagle Scouts did it down at a, at, um, Deveraux, I think, they put chain link fence up for the Eagle Project.
Yeah, but they, they put.
I don't know, but that's not an immediate solution, so.
No, we need the immediate solution, so I have a motion in a second, yes, Margaret.
Take it down.
Take it down.
Take it down. All in favor?
Aye.
On, on Maya's response.
On Maya's, okay, right away. And, and, and to that point, honestly, Nick, maybe you put up police tape tomorrow. I mean, if there hasn't been a crime scene, that seems wrong. Do you have, do not enter tape?
Close the entire playground? Because of fence?
Did you look at it, chief?
Yeah.
What do you think?
I don't think it's worth closing the playground for.
We're not closing the playground, we're removing the fence.
No, I actually just suggested closing it until we take off the fence.
Between now and then, if, if. Gary's gonna take it down tomorrow, so we'll be.
Oh, really? You'll let two people in today?
If the, if either of the chiefs are okay with it, then, then I'm okay with it for now.
Okay. Gary, the other things were more minor, I think there's a handhold on the, on the, uh, rock wall that's cracked, so I think somebody had a cut, and maybe we can just take that one hold right off.
Okay, they're just.
I haven't actually seen that.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
And there was something else.
The bubble on the little kid's slide is broken, I think.
Okay.
There's that glass bubble.
I think if it's broken, and we can't replace it, we take it out.
I'm not sure if there's sharp, like jagged plastic edges.
Yeah, I think it is, I think it's jagged plastic.
See, the problem we're having with this playground down here?
Yep.
We have just accepted one from the HEFA project, it's not even ADA, apply, it's not even ADA accessible or usable, and that's gonna go up at Glenwood, on Glenwood Street? On Glenwood, by the COA?
But, but Skip, your answer, your answer is?
We shouldn't be taking it.
Okay, well.
Because the liability and, and the cost of the town to make this thing ADA accessible for all these, these kids, it's, it's crazy. The whole town, we.
Well, we're not paying that, we're not, we have not committed to any money.
They're gonna give it to us, and we're gonna put it up, and then we're gonna have to pay for it.
Yes, you know what, somebody reminded me that the playground up at Memorial, and I have no idea what was there before, um, is only fourteen years old, and so, and apparently it was a, a quite large public fundraising project, I really, and they, they installed it themselves with, and then they gifted it to the town, and of course, most towns take care of and build their own playground equipment, and at the time, you know, we were where we were, um, so yeah, I mean, Skip has a point, we, maintenance is now on us. It's true.
Why can't we put some of the HEFA project, uh, stuff at the Memorial Field Playground?
It doesn't need it.
Accessible.
Well, no, that's not.
Well, it could go there, but I think that the intent with that was to put it.
The equipment is not.
Yeah. Uh, okay, so the, um, the playground, the other, and this is less about you, Gary, oh, no, there is one thing, so the playground people that want to do the project over at Glenwood.
Glenwood.
Community Center, they appear to have access to the equipment that they need to level, it was made very clear to them that they need to level ten feet out in all directions beyond the footprint of the, of the playground set, and that there needs to be a minimum of twelve inches of playground approved material, I think they're headed towards the mulch, they don't know where to get that necessarily yet, but they need approval of staking it out, and would like to meet, and ideally have you there.
That's gonna be just off of the soccer field, right?
That is, behind the tree line, too. They want to keep that tree line that's there, so there's the tree line and the two sheds, they'll put it right behind it.
Yeah, well, playground mulch is local, so we, that's what we pick up for this playground, so that's, that's the easy part, but if they just wanna, uh, if somebody wants to, um, to meet me up there and show me exactly where they want to put it.
Okay.
Very easy to stake it out, that's no big deal.
Okay, I think even if they stake it, and then you go up and say.
I think you'll find that behind that tree line slopes off down towards the easement, so that's, it's gonna take some fill, and it's gonna take, not necessarily some fill, but it's gonna take some, some timbers.
They, uh.
The level.
They know where it's going, so we'll have to have them take a look at it, maybe they'll get cold feet once they see, I don't know. All right, anybody? That's it on playgrounds. On, we're, Margaret, we're all done, Gary.
We're done.
I think we're done.
You're ready, Gary.
See you, buddy.
I have two announcements. The first one, the first one is the most important, and that is, I'd like to introduce Bob Reed.
Before he leaves.
As the town, yeah, as the town's new interim town administrator. Bob and I have been doing a transition period this month, and Bob starts, um, a regular three-day work schedule, three days a week work schedule, starting September fourth. Bob, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Come on up, Bob.
Pretty sure we.
Not just about everybody here, but. Yeah, we had a department heads meeting last week, and talked about my schedule, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and, uh, I think, uh, next week, because of the holiday, and also because of what I heard tonight, maybe, uh, I'll be working next Wednesday as well. So, I'm looking forward to it, a lot of challenges, um, Margaret's been great, trying to help get me up to speed, um, but still some work, I already have some meetings planned for next Tuesday, and I'm looking forward to it, working forward, working with the board.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Pretty sure we've told him that these meetings end earlier than this, I don't know, this isn't a good sign.
I know. I really, I thought this meeting went at night eight, but.
Sorry.
Nine to, nine to eleven, count on it.
Bob, you know I'll still be available to you by phone, if you have questions, and.
Yes, I'll be calling frequently.
Okay.
You will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
And the other announcement I have, and, or I don't know if Norm wants to take this, is that the town, um, has just hired a new planner, community development director, um, his name is David George, he comes to us, um, from Lexington for the past twelve years, he's been the Lexington's, uh, zoning administrator, but he actually lives in Holden, so he's very nearby here, probably excited to, uh, cut down on, on his commute time, but Norm got to spend a couple of hours with, uh, David in the office to introduce him to files and, uh, issues and things like that on Friday, and they plan on doing a little bit of that until David starts full-time, um, his thirty-seven and a half hour a week schedule on September tenth. So, yep, welcome, welcome aboard to David George.
Huge.
Nice.
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Thank you guys for all the work on that.
This is your last meeting?
Oh, and I'd like to say again, thank you to the board and everybody in town here, it's just been wonderful, and believe it or not, I talked to people at my, my new work now about, about Rutland, and, you know, all the, no, the challenges, and, but how beautiful the town is, and, you know, how community, community centered it is, even with this rapid population growth, it's still, it's still a, um, a town that, that has a very tight-knit community feel, and that's, that's special, so, thank you.
Thank you for everything, Margaret.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you very much.
Uh, under new business, Managed Growth Steering Committee, who had their first meeting last week, is that correct?
It is correct.
Yes.
And actually, I drafted some minutes, I keep meaning it this second.
Okay.
Which I will. Um, will we give you a little synopsis?
Yes, please.
Alright. So, uh, August sixteenth, we did have our Managed Growth Steering Committee, uh, some agency heads from the different boards, Mr. Williams, Mr. Gilroy, Mr. Moore, and myself, representing the planning board, Board of Health, Concom, and Select Board respectively. So, we all agreed that the committee is to be chaired by Ron Baron from CMRPC in there, that the committee's gonna consist of a representative from the, the boards that I just mentioned. We talked about what our goals would be, to talk about, uh, what we're gonna do with the project, uh, that CMRPC is, is doing, they're ready to put out the Phase Two of the Managed Growth Study. One of the major things that his project is doing is to try to take an overlay of the town, of all the parcels in the town, to rule out what has already been built on, to rule out what cannot be built on, to try to come back with a, uh, product of what is zonable, what, what is potentially buildable on the number of lots, uh, so they're trying to do a build-out analysis, looks at all the Rutland land, removes everything that can't be built on, and come back with an analysis as part of their study. Uh, this year, the goal is to, uh, to work on the build-out, next year is going to be a little bit, a deeper dive into recommendations, uh, the grant does expire in January of next year, twenty nineteen. And in the end, the, uh, committee, CMRPC, would also be directly involved in drafting of the proposed bylaw that would go to town meeting for, if, assuming that we want to move forward with the Managed Growth, uh, bylaw, that they would, uh, be behind the draft of that. Uh, we agree that we're gonna meet, oh, at least every other month moving forward. Ron's gonna work with the planning board specifically on a map analysis, uh, which I think seems to be the most important part of the study, is the mapping, uh, they'll be doing some number crunching, and then, uh, every other month, we're looking to do a review, uh, to circle back in there. Am I missing anything, Dick?
Right on.
So, um, I did prepare some minutes, basically, based on that, I'd be happy to send that in to, uh, whomever.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
Can I ask one quick question? When you say all available Rutland land, that's all city-owned?
Yeah.
So, that's if I owned thirty acres, it includes that?
Rutland, the map of Rutland, you take the map of Rutland.
So, even if I owned thirty acres, that's in there?
Yeah, it's gonna show. But it's also gonna show, like, fifty, over fifty percent is state-owned in there, right? So, that's gonna be.
Awesome.
Kinda like a heat map, right? And then, what's currently built on, and just to try to give you a, a potential of worst-case scenario, of everything that's buildable, how many houses would you be looking at, so that they can do the analysis of what's gonna domino from down there? So, that's the basis to the study.
Through the chair?
Yep.
That build-out will not only include homes, but will it also include infrastructure, water, sewer, all the costs and capacity use for that Managed Growth?
If I could, Jeff, I think what we did ask that question there, and they're starting with homes, they're starting with the structures, but they will move on to infrastructure later, because there're gonna be infrastructure impacts.
They said that was Phase Two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the, it's part of the build-out analysis, well, it's part of the fiscal impact study, actually, so.
And, uh, my apology, correction, uh, Margaret and, uh, Bob were also there at the meeting, so.
Great.
It took place in the small room here at the library, it was a public meeting, non-televised.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing? The town is still looking for an at-large member of this committee, we've got the committee representatives, the board and committee representatives, but there still is a vacancy for an at-large, uh, community member to participate in this, so if someone is interested, please send your, send your, um, interest to the Select Board's office for appointment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If I may, Sean Moore, three at CNET, um, um, do you have a date for the next meeting?
Ron was gonna set it, right? He said about every other month?
He's mentioned October.
October.
Give the planning board a little time to.
Uh, I think what he threw out there was every third Monday, six PM at the town hall, does that sound about right? Maybe? Unless it's, unless I'm writing down the notes from a different committee.
I'm so sorry, but I got lost in the woods. I was on hiking with my kids, uh, down by Long Pond, and we got lost and came out, um, in front of Mike Sullivan's house, uh, and I, I looked, didn't know it was Mike Sullivan's house to begin with, uh, knocked on, uh, saw him vacuuming his pool, and I was like, excuse me, sir, and he popped up, and we were parked down at, at the boat ramp, and we were just hiking, and just got, kept getting turned around, and.
Glad you made it out.
Hey.
We made it out, and, yeah.
Thanks for the story. And the apology. Gotcha. You'll make the next one, unless you get lost in the prison camps, and then we'll have another. All right. Uh, okay, so our last item on the agenda is unfortunately going to, and have us ending on kind of a bitter note, um, on our agenda last is the town, school transportation budget. So, I assume everybody saw or heard of the landmark headline, um, they've had another issue with budgeting, and it was pretty serious, uh, so basically, regional transportation was incorrect and under-budgeted, and the reason they are saying it was under-budgeted is because supposedly, the district had been including students within the one-point-five mile radius, that does not get reimbursed, according to Desi's, uh, site. It gets a little bit more complicated than that, um, because we really have no sense right now of how far back this goes. It seems, at this point, that Jay Sullivan at Desi is being very lenient, and only going back a few years, and not only go, only going back a few years, but allowing the district to repay the amount it owes across those few years. I really could not answer why he is stopping where he is, what's preventing him from going further. There is some discussion of whether or not the audit reports from the district might indicate this from previous years, um, we don't know that either, uh, at this point, the district has not reached out to any of the member towns, we learned this via the superintendent's report, and then the, uh, media coverage from Monday's meeting, which they had issues achieving quorum, and the meeting was very quick.
Didn't you first learn this from the newspaper?
Uh, I didn't, but I think a lot of people did, yeah. Yeah. Um, I printed out a few things, and the board really should probably get up to speed on this, and I would like to suggest that we take an action item tonight, I will go through them very quickly. So, uh, Joe Scanlon, the business manager who just left, he was hired back in twenty twelve, coming out of Belcher Town, coming out of another regional district, so it would be hard at this point to argue that he didn't know the process, and what you might be hearing and reading in the landmark is that this was an issue of Schedule Seven, um, which is an addendum where you certify your transportation reimbursement. This is it, this is Schedule Seven, it's really straightforward, um, and it has nothing to do with the student radius of where they live, it only has to do with certifying that you can fill your, you have filling your, are filling your buses by seventy-five percent. In order to get your transportation reimbursement, you have to have full buses, so that's Schedule Seven. Then, um, there's the regional school district transportation process, which is, uh, an MGL, it's under Chapter Seventy-One, we always talk about Chapter, Chapter Seventy-One, and as a side note, we know how hard our delegation at the State House worked to get us better reimbursement this year, they fought tooth and nail to get us eighty percent, the legislation says, you know, subject to appropriation, and so they've played with that over the years, and given us sixty-two percent, sixty-seven percent, and blah, 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 and we're, we're, our goal is a hundred percent. The delegation, as far as I know, was also not contacted in advance, um, it would be my expectation that they're going to personally reach out to the superintendent to get some answers on their own, because that really, you know, a lot of them worked really hard, within the Senate, within the House, Kim and Ann, to get us, uh, what they got us, and then to have that be a headline, and have them just be blindsided by it, didn't make them particularly happy either. I think the other question we have relative to Chapter Seventy-One, if anybody needs to know this, it's under seventeen, uh, sixteen C, is the section that, and is in regards to chap, uh, to regional transportation, very clearly says one-point-five miles, this is not new, um, it does say, measured by a commonly traveled route, that is the phrase they use, commonly traveled route, if you look, and I have this, too, you can all look at it, if you look under the Desi website of measurable distances, their definition of commonly traveled route shall mean a sidewalk or public way which in the ordinary course is open and accessible to pedestrian traffic. Is it possible that districts were taking the one-point-five and saying, well, it was one-point-five as long as it's pedestrian-friendly? You could say it might be possible, except that, in particular with Kim Ferguson, who You could say it might be possible, except that, in particular with Kim Ferguson, who sat on the, on the regional school committee, subcommittee out of the House, that never came up. It is not in Suzanne Bump's massive report. There is not one regional district that they know of that brought up the issue of the 1.5. What we do know is that our district, and I don't know how many years ago, apparently approved at the school committee level a policy whereby, as a courtesy, they would bus certain students because of safety concerns. That's a good thing. But they were well aware that they couldn't get reimbursed by state law. If you want to change the law, go ahead, but they simply couldn't get reimbursed, and they had to have known that. There's a lot of questions about what's going on at this. It is at this point very hard to conceive of a situation where this was unconscious or a mistake. We also don't know how long it's been going on. Obviously, Joe Scanlon has now left. It was the new district business manager that was put on the hot seat at the meeting last Monday. He basically alluded to the fact that they were sort of working with Jay Sullivan from Desi to try to get some reconciliation for this. I guess the questions we should all have is, how far back has this gone? Was it noted in any audit reports previously? What happened at what point, and who told who to do what? If, because if in fact those numbers changed recently, you would think somebody looking at our reimbursement rates would have said, "Jeez, how come the big jump all of a sudden this year? Why do we have so many more students this year?" We don't know the answer to that either. I'm going to suggest a couple of things. We obviously have the big regional Select Board meeting for all five towns coming up really fast on September eleventh, and I would, wanted to ask the board if they would approve a letter coming from us, signed by the chair, requesting clarification on what happened, and requesting a full line item budget expenditure and receipts going back at least two years, better five years. I mean, really, it's not anything we ever get. Anybody can access the audit reports that go back to 2012. I haven't gone through all of them yet. Right now, the only budget information up is from this year and last year, and it's just the budget book. It's not the same budget that we get from our other school. It's not the budget that most towns get. It never has been. I'm...
So move, do you have, do you have that?
What?
I'll stick with the five years.
Whatever you want to do.
Do the five.
Do the five.
So move, five years.
Margaret thinks...
What year did the district reportedly vote to provide this courtesy?
We don't know.
Okay, so I think that would be an important question to ask, and to get, to get it, you know, record of it, the documentation on that.
You would think we should go back at least one year prior to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, apparently, a couple of school committee members, when this was brought up, expressed their frustration at the state, and we've certainly all been frustrated with the state for not living up to their promises of funding, but this isn't that deal. The rules are clear. They're not that hard, and this is really insupportable, so...
I got it.
Yeah.
Do you have any sense from the other member towns, government, town government, not school committee, but Board of Selectmen, their, their path forward? Like, I mean...
Would be a good idea for this board to send copies to all the other town...
That's what, yeah.
Boards and finance committees.
Okay.
And maybe they join...
Join the letter.
Yeah, join the letter, or do their own.
Submit their own. I think it's going to take more than one town pressure, but I think that this has impacted all the towns.
And this could potentially be brought up as a, as a agenda item on the, for the roundtable as well.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
So, do we vote on that?
Uh, why, was there even, so do I, I had a motion, I guess, for a letter in a second? Okay, I'm just going to, we're going to go for the letter. Is there an approval? So we're going to generate a letter, signed by the chair, with the, pretty much what I outlined there, and those requests, and we're going at least a year beyond when the courtesy busing vote was taken. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Bob?
I think the letter's a fine idea. I had mentioned I have some meetings next Tuesday. One of them is, and Margaret had mentioned that there is an area administrators group that meets, and we're going to have a meeting of the district towns, the administrators, Tuesday.
Great.
Probably one of the things that we're talking about. There's also a meeting, prior to the meeting on the eleventh, of the administrators with the district. So pardon the meeting next Tuesday, is to help prepare for that also. I think it's puzzling that there's so little information coming to towns, considering the size of the problem and the numbers that are being thrown around and how all this happened, so maybe we can get some answers at, at some of those meetings.
Yeah, that's a huge understatement. And the fact of the matter is that at this point, as far as we can tell, the hit that they're going to take this year is $275,000, and they are simply going to absorb it without blinking. And I have no sense of where that money is coming from. I don't know that anyone does yet. It's probably, I assume, still a little bit early, but in the absence of line item budgeting, we wouldn't really have that answer anyway, so...
But it's important to keep your eye on next year, because next year, we'd see, we, the town, member towns are likely going to have to absorb.
Yeah, and of course, the other problem is, we thought we were going to get some money back, because the budget process at the state, we thought, had gone so well, and there was, you know, a very active political action group that had done a lot of work on that, and they were keeping the pressure on, and it seemed like things were going in the right direction. Yes, I'm sorry, Carol, you had a, did you have a question before?
No, I was just making up, like, thanks.
Oh. So, the irony is that Joe Scanlon, when he was hired, he was hired because the previous business manager had been fired for losing 1.2 million dollars because he had forgotten to add debt service to the bottom of the budget, and so it threw off the spreadsheet that he was using. And he was quoted in the paper as saying, "My number one challenge is restoring trust in this position." And here we are. Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Most of them turn.
Start. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.